Right. We're gonna start with a roll call.
All right, yes, sir. Mr. Dakota?
Present.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Kendrick? Mr. Maffet? Ms. Flatley?
Present.
Mr. Myers? Mr. Nicely?
Present.
And Mr. Palavoda?
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
All right, it has been established that we have a quorum. At this time, we can stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the globe, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Move our heads. Hail the Father, we thank you for the countless blessings you bestowed upon us. We humbly ask that you gather hearts and minds as we undertake the work of the county, grant patience, understanding, and a spirit of peaceful communication to all, and especially our constituents. Amen. Okay. All right, next, we're going to take a look at the agenda. There is an amendment that I have, or actually two. So we had a special presentation that was scheduled for tonight for Mr. Christopher Parker. However, we're going to reschedule that for next month or until further notice. In addition to that amendment, we're also going to move a presentation, application Z dash two zero two dash zero zero two six zero, the Northern Neck leasing rezoning application, we're going to move that just before the public hearing. So we're just, we're going to move that up. Is there, are there any other amendments that we need to make at this point? Seeing that there are none, if I can have a-
Make a movement, we adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made in second with a show of hands in support of. Right, amendments have been made unanimously. Okay. Next is our approval of minutes from our May thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. So instead of going through all of those individually, I ask that you take a minute to review. All right.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second. All right, motion's been made in second with a show of hands in favor. Looks like it passes unanimously with no abstentions. Okay. Okay, so next is our citizen public comment period. Comments will be, well, let me, let me clarify this. So this is a period for open comments on anything that you want to. Now, we do have some public hearing hearings that will come later on, and there's, there are sign up sheets in the lobby area. So for those with the, who wants to make public comments on the solar project or any of the, of the PC zero nine dash two five, ten dash two five, eleven dash two five, or twelve dash two five, you will do so at its appropriate time. Right? So with that being said, comments will be, this is now, we're opening the floor for citizen public comment period. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific, as I just said, specific public hearing items, please offer them at the time of the public hearing. All right, the floor is now open for public hearing. All right. So there, there are none on the sign up sheet. Is there anyone who wish to come forward? Hello, ma'am.
Hi, Terry Morgan, Shiloh District. I have a question. Did you all receive an email from me that was sent out to you all?
Yes.
Last day and a half. Were you able to read that? Because I know all the internet emails were down for you all.
Show of hands, who read it?
Yeah, who, who read it or who got it?
You don't.
Okay, so two people got it. Terry Morgan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You, you don't, yeah. Excuse me.
Yeah, you're, you're, I know your emails have been down for the last week.
Comment, you don't have to answer any questions. Right, please.
Your emails.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask, could you maintain order in the courtroom? I mean, in the boardroom, please.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I would just like to make sure that you're getting the information that was sent out to you from the public, because I know three people that tried to send emails, but your email's been down over a week. So I'm just trying to verify if you got it, because we were unable to get you the information. Simple as that. So did you, by a raise of hand, did you all get the email that I personally sent? Okay. Okay.
If you're speaking to the mic, sir.
No, that's fine. I just was concerned when it got pinged back nine times to me. So, you know. All right, I just wanted to, this is what I wanted to say. A definition of a rural area is a geographical location outside of cities and town characterized by low population, also encompassing countryside and settlements. So I just want to keep that in mind for later on, that we keep in mind what a rural settlement area and rural environment is for King George, since that is one of our overarching philosophies and our comprehensive plan is to keep our rural area.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Are there any others? Good evening, ma'am. If you could state your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Anna Maria Lobo. I live in Presidential Lakes. I want to thank you for your service to the community. In October seventeen, twenty twenty three, thank you. In October seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, I asked the supervisors to please wait a little longer for approval of the data centers. We are worried about the amount of water and electric power that we'll use. The people in Caroline County are worried about the water levels of the Rapahehene River. These data centers will use millions of gallons of water to cool their servers. I want to thank Mrs. Kathy Bender for getting the supervisors to renegotiate it for the data centers. The last supervisor seems to be signing everything good or bad. Also, I want to talk about the solar panels. Who will benefit? The people who sell the land, the company putting up the solar panels and Dominion Energy. What will the people of King George be getting more expensive electricity? That's what we're going to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any others?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Robertson, and I live at three forty McCarty Road, and that's in Stafford. I own the largest parcel of land that encompasses the proposed solar project, consisting of approximately three hundred and eighty-two point seven eight acres. First of all, since there was some negativity or concern during the last two meetings about residents or landowners not living in King George, I just wanted to make it clear for people here that I did used to live in King George. And then my husband and I moved about ten miles up the road into Stafford County because of my mother-in-law was ill, and we ended up staying there and taking care of the farm. And so when my husband and I, Hubert, we bought this property in the Shiloh District. We weren't looking to buy property, but a friend of his was surveying the Rogers property and told us about it being up for sale. So Hubert had always been a big hunter all of his life, living up in the country. So we found a way to buy it, although the property had already been sold. The buyer had the timber cut down, then defaulted on the loan. We found out about it, and then we contacted the Rogers and ended up buying it. Next, we searched the land records to contact adjoining property owners to talk with them about getting access and obtaining a legal right of way into our land, and all three landowners were, that we contacted, asked us to buy their land, and we eventually did. We didn't buy all this property as a land grab or anything like that. It just happened, and we felt like we were helping people out because they were elderly and sick and really just wanted to sell it, and we paid them their market price for it. So anyway, but we bought this property beginning in two thousand and two because we both enjoyed the outdoors and the wildlife. We spent a lot of time on our property improving access, digging trenches along the roadways we made or upgraded, laying pipes for water to flow under the roads, cleaning it up, and putting in gates to prevent people from entering the, to dump trash around there. And the adjoining property owners all agreed that this was a great idea, and so we just put a lock in, everybody had a combination to the gate. So Hubert hunted our land with family and close friends until he was diagnosed with multiple myeloma cancer in two thousand and twelve. Although the cancer treatment's worn down, he still loved to ride around the property in his truck or just sit in the quiet and, and watch all the deer and the turkey and eagles soaring overhead. So after a valiant fight, he passed away in twenty sixteen. So I'd been thinking about trying to sell my property to a developer for an outdoor, like a weapons training facility, since it's out in the middle of nowhere. But this solar project, I think, is a much better option for all because it will benefit the county and keep the land developed. Is that my time up? Okay, all right.
It is. I'll, I'll let you finish since there were a number of distractions. Go ahead.
All right, so anyway, I love that the solar project will permanently preserve our land for wildlife habitation and preclude residential development, and I have no doubt that's what my husband would have, would have wanted it as well. So I think that the, the project will create job opportunities for local residents and help meet the area's growing electrical demands, which is very important right now with the growing number of data centers throughout the region. My property is located down a rough gravel road about a quarter of mile off of Stony Knoll Road, and it's only accessible to adjoining property owners. Property rights are important to me, and placing solar panels on my land won't affect any neighbors because the solar panels will be completely hidden by trees, and it's because it's so far off the main road. And I say this last part only because in previous meetings, people had been critical to some of the speakers about, well, why, why are you worried about people seeing it, you know, or, or being critical about it being seen? So that's my point. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope that you will approve this project again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others who have comments outside of the solar panels and any of the other public hearing resolutions, zero nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? If it has something to do related to any of these issues, you have to wait until the public hearing for that time. With that being said, are there any others outside of that? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Tim Childers, Dahlgren District, and I really didn't intend to speak today. My wife and I are just here to, you know, see what's going on with the stuff that's going on, the Clyde Hill stuff across from three oh one. However, I'm not really desiring to talk about that tonight, and what I am wanting to talk about is the possibility that in the future that there may be changes to rules associated with zoning categories so that, you know, the number of acres that must be essentially, you know, qualified to be parcel off or whatever is increased. Okay, now, I kind of come at it from two different ways, all right? I'm one of, a, a pretty large landowner in the county in Dahlgren, and I have, my family's been there pretty much all my life, and I have no desire to really see this place become another Waldorf or, you know, the latest of Fairfax, whatever, all right? And yet, on the other hand, all right, people like me, all right, even though there are provisions that exist for us to, you know, transfer property to our children and so, such and so forth, I'd ask you to consider that people like me, sometimes they need to survive, all right? A neighbor of mine, case in point, essentially, you know, he had a large parcel of property, and he contacted me one day, one year, and said, hey, look, I want to sell my thing. And it's like, you know, I've got to sell the whole thing. And I said, well, you know, put it, put it in a land use, do whatever. And he said, no, you don't understand, I can't do that. Well, it turned out that his wife was dying of cancer, and he was just frantic to find some way to make, well, you can imagine, I mean, if you have your loved one and everything, what about people who they have to, you know, survive? What if somebody were to lose their job, something of that nature, and all of a sudden, now, here's the thing. You know, it is desirable to limit development. I totally get that. At the same, but at same token, though, what can happen is if you make draconian restrictions, you can essentially make it so that the only way that a person can survive is to sell lock, stock, and barrel. And then the person who is equipped to do that is not likely in these, this day and era to be a farmer or something. It's likely to be a developer, and then they typically come back and they have more money, and they, they can just like, it's like there's a Chinese proverb that well-
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Morgan, and I live in the Shiloh District. Specifically zoning. I mean, me as a landowner in the Shiloh District, to me, zoning is important because zoning protects the homeowners. When you look to purchase inside of King George, you have a couple places. You, you can look into a subdivision where you're going to have HOA, and you're going to have, so you're going to be protected by the regulations. But if you're not in an HOA, then you look at zoning. You're looking at all the properties around you. You're looking in the general vicinity. So when you purchase a property and you invest your life into that property, your zoning is your protection. It protects your investment. So, and that really seems to be kind of what we're talking about. And I know there's a big scare from other people who spoke, like it could be sold to developers. It could, but a developer is not going to tie up two and a half million dollars on property they cannot subdivide nor make money. So that's not going to happen, and they're not going to sell to a gun range because that's already been turned down specifically in the Shiloh District. So it's just not going to happen. But right in our area, people are scared. People are putting homes up for sale and property up for sale because, I mean, they just purchased three years ago, and who does that? You don't purchase a home with the intent of living there for your life and all of a sudden going to sell it in two and a half years just to lose ten percent on your property. Why are they doing that? Because of the zoning issues that are coming up in, specifically in the Shiloh District. Because that is what protects. When you look at agricultural, it's in your agricultural district, you are protected. The only thing that can come in there, it has to be a special exemption. That means there's no more zoning rules. If we give out special exemptions for things that shouldn't happen in agricultural area. So when we allow those things to happen, you are taking away the protections of individual rights where they have invested their life. Because who would stop me from coming beside your house, buying a property, and then putting whatever I want to on it? It's called zoning. So that way, I don't put a cigarette shop right there, or I don't put a junkyard right there beside your home. What would happen to your property value? It would go down. So what's going to happen to property values? That's why these people are trying to sell. Two of our people right outside of our back gate on our, on, on property, that is a gravel road that's already been mentioned. Those properties have gone up for sale in the last six months because of everything that has happened and transpired. So as we make decisions, zoning comes down to the number one rule, and that should guide our decision-making. Does it meet the zoning plan and the comprehensive plan? So as you consider decisions, please take that into mind.
Thank you, sir. All right, are there any others? No, sir. There is a time in public hearings for that. You'll have a chance. Yes, sir.
I'm Mr. Hickman, and I bought my property in-
Mr. Hickman, what's your, your address, sir?
One, two, four, zero, three Hoppy Lane, and I have a little piece there that I call heaven, called Biota, which means flora and fauna. It's all in woods except for where my little house is, and it's, if you want to see a wildlife preserve, come visit. A forest is a place that promotes wildlife, all kinds. I learned it in the few college classes I had, that if you have a good land use, it's either agriculture or forest, and each one produces topsoil. That's the truth. And I have an abundance of wildlife, including beavers, ants, muskrat, and every once in a while, an otter comes and eats all the fish, but an abundance of fish, wood ducks, come and look at Biota. It's beautiful. A forest produces the most of everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others? No, sir. There is a, a public hearing for that specific issue, and, yes, sir. You have your opportunity. Are there any others? All right, if not, this citizens' public comment period is now closed. Panel will now open for our discussion, should we choose.
So discussing the public comment?
Public, the public comment.
First of all, I, I appreciate the comments about the emails. Typically, we don't answer questions or interact during the public comment time, but this forum right here is when we can address anything that you've said. So I, for one, have not gotten any emails, and since I don't use my personal email because it opens it up to FOIA, I have not received anything regarding any of these projects in the last several weeks.
So I will comment on that. The, yes, the email was down, however, it is now up for each and every member to read those comments. They all have been sent out. So I would encourage each of you to take, take a moment or two to read them and, and take all, all comments into consideration in our decision. All right, are there any others?
I want to follow up on the question about zoning, and we have a, a commission that is just wrapping up their work on that, which is bringing some recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, and there'll be more information out there now that will try to accommodate those situations. And, you know, we do seek to preserve at all times the right for it to transfer to a family member or immediate family member, and if there's, anyone who wants to review that and bring suggestions on how to make that better, we're more than willing to listen to that, but someone should be able to divide their land and family. It just should be possible.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on discussion? All right, that discussion period for the committee is now closed. Next, we will have our community planning liaison officer, naval support facility, South Potomac Dahlgren, Mr. Adam Lynch. Mr. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Planning Commission. Several items to discuss. First and foremost, we have a change in command that's going to be occurring this summer. Captain Jonathan Townsend, our CO for the last year, is being relieved. We don't know exactly what the timing looks like, but it's safe to say it will be this summer sometime. We're going to be distributing information through our Public Affairs Office to representatives from the county and look forward to sharing the good news about our new incoming CO in the near future. I have joined a George Washington Regional Commission Rural Transportation Advisory Council. Looking forward to participating with GWRC staff, transportation staff, on ways that the King George County transportation system can, can be improved to improve safety and consistency with the base's mission. Some of the examples that we expect to talk about during the TAC meetings are bike and pedestrian connectivity in the vicinity of the base, including improving sidewalk connections on Dahlgren Road. See a lot of people out there walking along the side, along the shoulder of Dahlgren Road, especially near the base, hoping to see a plan to improve some of those bike and pedestrian connections. Also, potentially pedestrian connection to the Dahlgren Heritage Trail, which would allow recreational opportunities for sailors and their families. Another issue that we are going to be hoping to speak during that TAC advisory committee is the safety of some of the two-lane rural roads that deliver a lot of commuter traffic to and from the base. Think two eighteen and two oh six. Some of those don't have very good sight lines. They have narrow shoulders. They present, you know, a safety issue to the people who work on base. A lot of them live in places like Stafford, Spotsylvania, and city of Fredericksburg. So that's something we, we look forward to discussing with the rest of the TAC members. I'm in the process right now of finalizing some funding requests for open space conservation through the REPI program, Readiness and Environmental Protection Integration. That provides cost share money for private conservation in areas that are affected by Dahlgren's mission. So most of those are, are open spaces in places that we would prefer to steer development and other more intense uses away from. And one of the two projects that we are submitting funding for is in King George County. Land conservation, property rights can be a sensitive topic, so I'm not at liberty to really discuss any specifics about that project, but we're really excited, and hopefully, a, as that moves ahead, we can share more information. Another topic that I know is of interest to the King George County, the Emergency Services Department, Fire and Rescue, is submitting a request for a Defense Critical Infrastructure Program or a DCEP grant to help fund the fire station that is planned at the corner of Route three oh one and, I want to say, two oh five. So we are in support of that because that allows for service sharing relationships between our own fire department and the King George Fire Department to make sure that we optimize response times and, and safety response in that area. And finally, on my side, this will be my last meeting till August for a good reason. I have a, a baby boy on the way in about two weeks, so I'm looking forward to paternity leave. So I'll, I'll miss your July meeting, but look forward to seeing you guys back. I will be returning on August eleventh, for the record. So happy to take any questions.
I just wanted to commend you on the, the progress you're making with the pedestrian access. I would say I've thought about connecting to that Dahlgren Trail as well. I would take it even further and consider a bike path all the way to Barnesfield Park because eventually that's going to have good river access and I think more amenities. That would be a really great opportunity for people that live in Dahlgren and take that route.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Lynch, I have got a, a question for you about, you, you mentioned the, the roads and the rural roads and the transportation issues that are going on. Is the, is the base looking at all to reestablishing what, you know, decades ago, there used to be buses that came from the, from Fredericksburg, and I believe even from Tapahannock and, and Warsaw and Montross. Buses, I mean, big public transportation buses that were coming in and out of the base. Is there any activities looking at reestablishing some of those? I mean, those were decades ago. There was enough support for that.
Yes, so there's, that is a, a topic that we, we frequently talk about, sort of aspirationally. sort of aspirationally. There's been some discussion over the year of a Fred bus, the Fredericksburg Area Rapid Transit, basically civic local bus, actually qualified for VDOT funding to have a Fred FXBG Go route, dedicated commuter route from Fredericksburg to the base. And the barrier that was identified during that discussion was that there is not a good circulator within the base. So once you arrive at the front gate, there really is not a good way to move people around within the base. There's also not a infrastructure there, sort of a bus station, bus stop, to accommodate those commuters that are getting dropped off outside the gate. But we think those are surmountable issues that we would like to continue those conversations.
Yeah, I think I think we really need to take a look at that to to reduce the commuter traffic. I mean, like I said, it was there decades ago when I first started on the base. There were giant buses that stopped in front of 1,200, 1,500, 218. Some of these building numbers that you that you know are certainly a massive cluster, working out at the B Gate complex.
The the closest thing we have currently are a ban share that do allow individual commuters to sort of band together and rent a 15-passenger van, then use that to save themselves having to put more extra miles on their own personal vehicles to and from work. So that's that's something I think that's helpful, but not does not may get to the level of what you're discussing.
Yeah, I just encourage you to continue to look at those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, honey, any other comments?
Yeah. Adam, could you tell us a little bit more about the EMS station request, grant request on the DCSIP?
Certainly. So DCSIP is a program that provides money for local governments and other community partners that are doing infrastructure or other service projects that benefit the base, right? So think about, for example, if there were to be a transportation improvement that were underway outside the fence line that helped the base accomplish our mission in some way, that could potentially be eligible for the DCSIP funding program. Likewise, same concept. King George County's Fire Department is applying for that money because they would like to tap into some of those same dollars. And and we believe that that is something that would further our mission as well.
I know fire stations have been funded under the DCSIP program.
It's a it's a very competitive program. We're talking single-digit success rate on even strong applications in 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 some cases in the past. So we're 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 trying to do our best to to do our part to make sure it wins.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? All right, seeing that, Mr. Lynch, thank you so much. Congratulations on your baby boy. We'll see you in July. Oh, sorry.
August.
Yes, August. All right. Next on our meeting agenda is old business, C non-written. Do we have any that you know of? Okay, all right. Okay, so next is our amended portion of the agenda, which is a presentation of application Z-202-00260, Northern Neck Leasing Rezoning Application.
Good evening. How are you all doing?
Good evening.
My name's Daniel Edwards. I'm here on behalf of my client, Northern Neck Leasing Company, which owns 12284 State Road. That is tax map 25134. That's currently zoned C2 commercial. And the property has served as a nonconforming industrial use since 1989. It was originally purchased in 1973 and used as an industrial transportation freight service center. And under Article 9, 921, a legal nonconforming use may continue as it existed when it became nonconforming. And that's exactly what the property has been. It's been 52 years operating in transportation logistics and freight services. In February of 2024, my client received a zoning opinion letter from Richard Stewart, and that's attached to our application as Exhibit 1, confirming its legal nonconforming use status. The current tenant is Equipment Corporation of America, and they have a zoning permit which was issued in February 2024, number 20247961. And most recently, we received a letter from Matthew Smolnick in October of '24 confirming legal nonconforming use. Now, the King George Comprehensive Plan supports additional industrial development in areas with established industrial use. And that's what we have. For over 50 years, it's been an industrial use. It's been a transportation and freight services location. However, the current tenant, Equipment Corporation of America, which is using the property for transportation and freight services, has a lease that ends in 2029. And we would like to rezon the property to industrial to ensure we don't need a new permit. Or if ECA leaves and we need to find a new tenant, we don't need to get another zoning permit. And rezoning to industrial will reflect not only the property's historic use and current use, but also the future use as we intend it. What I've brought with me today is the existing conditions plan from 2023, and nothing will be physically altered from that. That conditions plan is how the property was built in 1973. It reflects the property's status in 1989, when the zoning ordinance was created. It reflects the property's status in 2024, when ECA started their lease. And it reflects, in perpetuity, our intended use of the property. One question that came up for us during our initial application review was spot zoning. And looking at the 301 corridor, all industrial zone property is isolated. There's no real industrial zone. Much of that land is vacant. The only other comparable transportation or freight service was Fowler Hauling, which was granted a industrial status in 2016. And they, unlike my client, had not been operating since 1973. So we very much meet a historic and established use. As part of our application, we've proffered that there will be no electricity generating facility, junkyard, recycling plant, resource extraction, or heavy manufacturing. We just want the property to continue as a transportation and freight service location, but under the proper zoning, and that would be industrial zoning. We're not sure why the property was zoned C2 commercial in 1989 when the zoning ordinance was adopted, but now we're looking to rectify that. And in conclusion, rezoning to industrial, it's in line with the goals of the zoning ordinance. Article 1137 states the purpose is to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarge the county tax base. ECA had a gross income of $10 million in 2023. They intend to be a long-term tenant. We'd like to keep them as both an employer and as a taxpayer in our county. Additionally, under Article 4 of the ordinance, the intent of an industrial district is to recognize industrial uses which presently exist within the county. Again, we have that here. For 50 years, this has been operating as an industrial facility. It is now a grandfathered-in legal nonconforming use. And we ask that it's rezoned from C2 commercial to I industrial to reflect that. At this point, I'll take any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Has that list of proffers you mentioned been circulated to the Planning Commission yet?
It was circulated to the Development Committee, and it was part of our application narrative. I believe we sent 15 copies.
Okay.
I have an extra copy if you'd like one right now.
Yeah, it'll be.
I think all of us would need to, you know, get into that in detail. Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say it will be. This will come before you for public hearing.
Yeah.
With all the application information.
Personally, I have sympathy for you, but I would like to see the the proffers.
Of course. That'll be all right.
Any 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 questions?
What what uses could you do under the proper zoning that you're not doing now? I mean, what what is the reason that you want to go from your vested rights to generic industrial?
It's. If we don't use it for two years, we lose it. And if we have trouble, if there's an economic downturn, if we can't find a tenant two years, we don't want to lose our grandfathered status. And granting the industrial zoning will not change the status quo. There's no anticipated change in what this property is being used for. It's really just peace of mind that we're after here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next is a a public hearing for Resolution PC-09-25, application Z-2024-00184, the Gibson Solar Special Exception. If I can get the, yeah.
Thank you, sir. I'm just going to give a brief overview and then turn it over to the applicants for their updated presentation. So as you all know, the Planning Commission considered this application at a public hearing back in March, where you voted five to four to recommend approval of the special exception permit to the Board of Supervisors. An error in public notice led to the applicants and the county needing to re-advertise this public this public hearing for tonight. That's why we're here. I'll give a brief recap of the application. Representatives from Open Road Renewables and Gibson Solar have applied for a special exception permit to construct a utility-scale solar energy facility combined with a sheep grazing operation on approximately 890 acres of private land made up of 48 parcels in the Shiloh District. The subject property lies within the Potomac and Rappahannock River rural development areas designated in the comp plan. The applicants have been working with county staff to address any comments they had through the review process, as well as emergency planning and training needs for fire and rescue. All the reviewing agencies will be contacted again for comments should this project move forward to the site planning stage. Staff has has received several emails and letters of both support and opposition for this project. We've provided these letters to you all and have forwarded some today via email. I'm sorry about that issue with the domains, but we have it back now. The draft permit conditions document is included in Resolution PC-09-25 for your consideration, and draft motions are included at the end of the staff report. The packet also includes a redline version of the conditions document with the applicants will go over during their presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for having us tonight. As Kelly explained, we are in front of you again for a public hearing to to fix the defect in the public notice. So I wanted to, first of all, just really appreciate your time in holding another public hearing for this. I know it's a busy night, so I'll go ahead and get started. The one silver lining, I guess you could say, is it gave us three extra months for community meetings and continued feedback and all the changes to the conditions that you have in front of you there. Next slide, please. Oh. All right, so instead of a full summary, which you've seen before of the project, I'll be focusing on three aspects of it. So the conservation easement, to permanently preserve the land, and an update on the counterparty that we found to hold that easement, and the continued agricultural use and some of the input we've gotten from the local ag community to improve it. And then also the stormwater engineering that's taken place over the last few months. I will give a quick, high-level overview. As a reminder, it's a 134-megawatt solar facility. It'll produce enough power on an annual basis. That would equal the same consumption of 16,000 homes. There would be 890 acres of project inside the fence line, and there's almost no grading that will take place because of the terrain following racking that has been chosen. Here's the context map. You can see the project in relation to Route 3, Big Timber Road, and Prim Road. The the key here is that from all these vantage points, the project is well-screened by either existing forest or existing burms in the case along most of Route 3, except for the section along Big Timber Road, which is where that's where the screening and setbacks will be extra robust. This is the main section of the project, right underneath underneath the transmission line. The key here is that half of the land sits inside that buffer, those pink areas, which are either newly planted vegetation or open space. So the project itself is set back far into into the properties. And there are several separate fenced areas which allow the project to conform, to avoid the wetlands, and also maintain those wildlife corridors where the creatures follow the wetlands. So if the project moves forward, you would see 1,300 acres of land permanently preserved. And this would be done through a conservation easement that would be recorded prior to construction. The only use at that point would be solar, agriculture, open space, and timber. And this, when this came in front of you before, we had proposed it as a restrictive covenant. The critique there was that the county would have to actually hold the enforcement, so they'd shoulder the burden if the covenant was violated. Now that we've pivoted to a more more classic conservation easement and found a good partner for it, it puts the enforcement burden on that third party. The partner we've chosen is the North American Land Trust. They'll be the counterparty to enforce the easement. They've completed 600 projects over the course of the last 30 years, including one here on the Northern Neck called Bluff Point. It's a coastal preservation project. They have the scale that we're looking for in a partner of a project of this size. And you can see on the map here, we're right in their sort of sweet spot for for geography. And here's the map you've seen before. These are all the purchased or the the parcels that the project will be purchasing, thus can go into the conservation easement. So those are the 1,300 acres highlighted there. So the livestock operation that'll take place underneath and surrounding the the solar arrays, it'll be hundreds of sheep that are rotationally grazing the entire site. It's a good opportunity for the farmer because land access is a problem right now. The farming population is getting older, and the younger generation is having a hard time breaking into it because the cost of land has gone up so much. So that's one of the reasons I'm excited about this is the project will pay them a salary to actually maintain the grasses. So that that lowers the the bar to get in because they're not just getting revenue from the sale of lamb. And the project also maintains the fence line. And the project also maintains the fence lines surrounding the operation, so that's, you know, one less thing that the, the young farmer needs to invest in. And so here are the legally binding commitments that really make the ag operation real and keep it local. So the, the first one is that the farmer that is chosen must either be a resident of King George or has been doing business in King George already. I think a number of you have gotten to hear from Kelsey Trainer of KB Grazing. She's the, the company that we're, we're working with on this at this point. And then there are the requirements to have the, the whole operation up and running within two years of commercial operation. So the, you know, you can't just mow and hope that the operation gets up and running. This is an operation that needs to expand and get in place right away. The soil health is hugely important to the agricultural operation. So we've worked with a couple of soil scientists and also a couple of people in the local agricultural community to really understand what soil characteristics are really important to make that agricultural operation work. And we've turned that into a series of conditions. So before construction, there'll be really rigorous testing for all of the characteristics listed here. And several times throughout operations, the testing will have to occur again, and amendments will be added to the land as needed to bring that pH and all the other characteristics into an appropriate level, mainly to support the, the target forage tonnage rate that is set with the local farmer. So on to the stormwater design. This, this has been a point of discussion that has really come to the forefront in the last few months, I would say. And what we've done is hold community meetings and conversations to really understand what parts of the project are, are a concern and where, you know, where the constituents are, are, you know, concerned about runoff from the project. Stormwater runoff during construction is, is extremely important to build into the design. So in this case, we, we saw all of these commitments on the left side here, the conditions. They included erosion and sediment control measures installed before doing any other, any other work, robust inspection during construction, and then phasing of construction to, to limit any movement of dirt at one time. Everything on the right side, these are the conditions that are redlined in front of you. These are, are new from the recent community meetings that we've had. Essentially, everything has been, been designed to a much more serious storm event. So for example, the outlets for the basins are now designed to a 50-year storm event instead of a 25-year event. The spillaways are designed for a 10-year storm event versus two-year storm event, which was the best practice. Stormwater conveyance systems are now 25-year instead of two-year, et cetera. So I've included, and this is the drawing in front of you as well, it's a section of the civil engineering plan, which just shows the indicative locations of 10 of the stormwater basins throughout the site. This is one section. Throughout the entire site, there's a total of 90 stormwater basins. So these will be installed prior to construction at the low point of any potential discharge from the site, so that they'll catch any sediment before it runs off the site. These are examples of what some of the other stormwater BMPs look like. So you have diversion ditches, sediment basins, sediment traps. These photos show when these BMPs are functioning well, and the special exception conditions are all written so that they're maintained and continue to, to function well. And happy to answer questions about the stormwater engineering and design following the, the presentation, but for now, I'll, I'll just end by saying, you won't see this project. It's well-screened from the roads. It'll introduce a large amount of tax revenue, about half a million dollars a year, without any drain on county services. The grid needs these electrons. The land needs to be preserved from housing developers. You'll hear from the public after this, and I hope what you find is that all of the conditions in front of you do already address the concerns that come up. So, thank you.
All right. Commissioner, if you have any questions, now is the time. Come forward. Thank you, Mr. Fox. You got it.
I do have a question just about, if you can go back maybe to the permanent land preservation slide there. Maybe just clarify the mechanics of this a little bit for us. Is the, the use as a solar farm facility one of the permissible uses in perpetuity under the preservation?
That's correct, and it's actually split. The, the site will be split between a predefined conservation area and developed area. So all of the land outside of the fence line, which is several hundred acres, will be permanently preserved as a non-solar use from day one. Everything within, in the fence line, solar will be one of the permissible uses alongside, you know, farming.
Okay, I, I kind of, this is probably my fault. I, I sort of had the impression that once the project was decommissioned, it wasn't going to come back in another form 20, 50 years later, kind of thing. But this preservation would technically allow for, regardless of what may be agreed with the county separately, this preservation structure would allow for that. Is that right?
Well, you, you had it correct. Once the project is decommissioned, then you cannot reinstall solar panels.
Under the preservation, that's, that's how that.
Correct.
Works?
Once it's decommissioned, yeah.
Okay, because I, on a straight reading of it, it, it looked as though that's, the following uses are permissible, and solar is one of them without any qualification around it.
Right, they should have been qualified to say initially, yes, that's the permissible use because that's what the project is, but following decommissioning, that is taken away as permissible use.
You're quite certain of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's why I mentioned the two different sides of this. You have the buffer area, which is preserved from day one, and then the inside-the-fence area, which is preserved, but it allows solar. After decommissioning, that all combines, and it's all the restrictions apply to the entire property at that point.
Okay, good. And then my other question, and at some point in the past, I believe you have answered this, so my apologies, but could you just remind us roughly what percentage of the total area would have to be graded, cut and fill, and that, that type of thing, to make ready for the project?
Yeah, only a couple of percentage points, and it's almost entirely to make way for these sediment basins because the, the racking systems and the panels that are inside the fence lines there will be chosen so that they're the terrain-following type where you have, you can follow pretty steep grades without actually having to do any cut-and-fill grading.
So only a couple of percentage points out of the entire project?
That's right.
Very good, okay. And then lastly, I, just a little abstract question here, but are, are you by any chance performing background checks on any people who've raised opposition to this project in any way?
Uh, not, not background checks. We've, we were directed by the supervisors to, to reach out to all the speakers from the last hearing.
Okay.
We went ahead and, you know, extended the olive branch, so, you know, called them from, from numbers that.
Terms of sort of, you know, research or, or third-party paid research into.
No, none of that.
That kind of thing?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, are there any other questions from the panel at this time? Go, go Sean, and then we'll go with Ms.
Yeah, I was looking at the. Permanent land preservation. I see that it's changed to include a low-density residential at the completion of the product, project, because that was not there before. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the counterparty we've chosen, the North American Land Trust, and their standard agreement, they do allow for up to one home per parcel on these large tracts of land. So the most that it could be developed would be to have 16 homes total across the entire 1,900 acres. But yes.
You know, how many parcels total is it right now?
Uh, 16, plus, plus easement parcels, but those will not be part of the conservation easements.
Okay, thank you. There's no opportunity to expand.
I'm sorry, sir. She's, she has the, she has the floor.
Thank you.
I had a similar question, that parcel as it stands today, not future parcels divided up.
Correct, as it stands today, when we signed the agreement before construction.
Okay. And then I had some questions. Do you have anybody currently in litigation against you?
I don't believe so. No, our co-founder says no.
Okay. I, I had some questions about your tenant and owner agreement, where it, there's a paragraph, and it's all very legalistic, so I'm going to paraphrase it. I want to make sure I understand this. Basically, it says that the tenant, which is Gibson, is not responsible for any, sorry, is indemnified against any present or future hazardous materials, being leached, disposed of. Basically, it, it says that the responsibility would be on the owner to deal with any hazardous materials on the property, that they, and that they cannot hold the tenant responsible for any health issues or loss of livestock or, you know, accidents that occur. So can you kind of explain what the safety precautions are against the risks of electromagnetic and stray voltage? And what your responsibilities are to the, to the owners and anybody who might be on their property and could get hurt?
Sure, so the EMF concern, everything around us emits EMF, your, your cellphone does. And I can, I can share a study that shows that the, the level of EMF, it decreases on an exponential basis so that by the time you hit the fence line, it's fully dissipated. The only material that produces any meaningful EMF is the inverters. So that's why we've set them inside the project by 500 feet, whereas there's nothing in the ordinance that requires an additional setback for them. So that's why we've voluntarily done that for EMF and noise to have no impact at the fence line.
The wording, I just want to clarify, says that the owner is aware of potential risks associated with electromagnetic and stray voltage and waives any claims resulting from these causes. So if that's in your contract with them, why would it be there if there weren't some inherent risks?
Commissioner Flatley, thank you for the question. This came up, I believe, at the March Planning Commission discussion. And after that, I provided a planning commissioner nicely, the National Institute of Health report on EMF radiation and EMF as a concern with power generating facilities, with end uses, et cetera. All of the studies that are out there show that this does not present a concern. And with regards to the contract language between the owner and the tenant, that's put in there by attorneys for financing purposes, right? I don't know specifically what contract you have that you're referring to, because that, I don't believe, applies to the special exception permit application, but if there's a concern with hazardous material or EMF emissions, we do address hazardous materials with regards to the panel selection and the EPA T-clip test.
So part of our job in approving a special exception is to deal with the public health, safety, and welfare. So that's why it's relevant.
Okay.
Any, you're, okay. Mr. Muffey, I think you, you have the floor.
Just to confirm, this is what, 30- or 40-year project?
It's a 40-year project.
And it could be re-upped at that point, right? There's no guarantee it'll be decommissioned at 40 years.
We would have to come back to the Board of Supervisors at that point, and also the lease agreements run out at 40 years, so there would be a lot of work to be done. That's, that's why we call it a 40-year project. Real estate and the county approvals last for 40 years.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Fox, you have the floor? No, you're good. Okay. Mr. Nicely.
Yeah, I, I wanted to share the concerns from, from Mr. Flatley, and Ms. Flatley about the, the addition of this low-density residential. I don't know if the county attorneys have, have looked at these agreements. I'm, I'm a little concerned that that's been added here at the last minute. You know, is, is it really locked down to the current parcel descriptions, or as people start subdividing this, do we suddenly run into an issue where someone is going to take one of these parcels and going to come back for a subdivision on it and divide it into 50 parcels? And suddenly, we're right back to, well, we didn't preserve the rural because now we've got a subdivision that someone has applied for. And I'd just like, I'd like for the county to, county attorneys to take a look at that, the way that language is written, to make sure that it truly does apply to the current parcels as defined and not future definition.
I'll pass that along to Mr. Stewart.
Thank you very much. My.
Great point, and that's, that's important to us as well.
Yeah, it's really important for us to make sure that this language is ironclad, or we're going to come back with people going, well, I've got, I've got the rights to do what I want to do on my property, and suddenly we're going to be back here arguing about what's rural and what's not rural in the future.
Our intent is not to grant low-density residential uses. That's the form language from the easement counterparty. Between now and the Board of Supervisor's decision on it, we're happy to work with the counterparty to see if that can be removed from their form easement agreement. We're currently working through the redline process on the easement agreement with them, and we have no interest in expanding the uses from when we were in front of you before. There's no interest that we have there. I understand that that presents a concern for the body here. And what I'd like to share with you guys is we will take that to nought, to see whether in the easement redlines that we're going back and forth with, whether the future uses remove the low-density residential use.
Thank you very much. I mean, we can leave that to the county attorney and the Board of Supervisors to have the final, final say. My, my other quick question for you is, I was looking at your soil testing and, and the additions that you've been, that have been made to there. There've been a number of feedback that we've had from some county residents concerned about hazardous chemicals coming off of solar farms and stuff, and people worried about pollution in the waters and things of that sort. And what I noticed in your soil testing is you're only really predominantly looking at pH levels and P&amp;K levels for your soil testing. And you really don't specifically talk about testing for, you know, down the road, hazardous chemicals that have come off of these solar panels. I don't anticipate there being an issue, but I'd like to, I'd like to see something that includes that as part of your soil testing to ensure the county residents that we don't have hazardous pollution coming off of these plants. Many people have voiced concerns about that. I want to make sure that that's properly addressed.
That's a great point. And this, that section of the soil testing and the conditions you're looking at, Section 5B, those conditions are meant to support the grazing operation. So this is all of the soil conditions that are important to get forage to grow really well. The hazardous materials concern is addressed under the, where it talks about solar panel specifications, where they have to be chosen from a certain list of approved panels and also pass an EPA test. But we, we can absolutely add that to sort of belt and suspenders underneath that soil testing.
Yeah, I'd like to see something about that, about hazardous chemicals in, in the runoff and the stormwater management, that that's properly tested and accounted for, so that we can, you know, make sure that the county residents are, are properly protected against that sort of long-term concern.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, you have the floor. Mr. Nicely, you, you done? Okay. Mr. Kendrick, you have the floor?
Thank you. I would second Mr. Nicely's concerns about the possibility of chemicals coming off of the, you know, the treatment of the, of the solar panels. But again, I just want to say this one more time. You're still planning on cutting down almost 600 acres of trees.
Correct, yeah, there, there's about 600 acres of a pine plantation that we'll be cutting down, which will be harvested in the next 10 years or so anyway. These are all areas that were once open fields and were planted with pines 60-something years ago. They've been harvested once, 30-something years ago. They're ready to be harvested again, whether or not the solar project exists. So yes, simple answer is yes, though.
Okay, I appreciate that you've taken a look at the stormwater runoff and those things, but still have concerns about this, but we'll talk about it in a moment.
All right. I think all the questions have been raised at this point. We may have some others after the public comment period. So at this time, I am going to open the floor for public comment. I, and actually, I have a sign-up sheet, so we'll go by that first, and then I'll open it up for those who, who will come after that. As with all public comment periods, we ask that, well, we will be limited to a three-minute per person to afford everyone the opportunity to speak. per person to afford everyone the opportunity to speak. So first on the list is Ms. Anna Marie Lovell.
Hi.
Pull your mic down.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Lakes. I want to ask you tonight, who will benefit the people who sell the land, the company putting up the solar panels, and Dominion Energy? What will the people of King George be getting? More expensive electricity? And you have to remember what happened to Wiltwood. Wiltwood have, until 2056, have a contract, but in no time, they demolished everything, and we, you don't have no more taxes. I want you to remember these things very clear, where are you going to do the King George? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the list is Travis Collison. Collison? Good evening, Mr. Collison. Just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. I'm Travis Collison. I live in the Dogren District, on Poplar Neck Road. Rural is about population density, for sure, and we don't normally think of solar panels as rural. However, although counterintuitive, if you put these 1,300 acres are devoted to a dual-purpose enterprise, that does limit, it does limit the population of the area. It ensures open spaces for grazing and dark skies. Although the opposition to this project insists on labeling the sheep part of the project as a distraction, those folks clearly have no direct experience raising sheep at scale. 200 to 400 goes is considerably more than a distraction. I've run 100 before, and it was more than I wanted. Swift establishment of good sod on any disturbed dirt is the best defense any of us have to erosion. The applicant clearly understands that, and is committed to do so in this special exception. From the recent changes to the special exception wording, it is clear that the applicant is just as concerned about making the grazing part of the project work as they are of making the solar portion work. By providing soil health targets, they are clearly committed to providing positive environment for grass to grow and sheep to graze. We don't have many farmers in the county. We have fewer still that graze livestock at scale. Not all ground is suitable for row crops. For this ground, grazing is often the most productive use. Every year, more fields are left fallow, more acres are allowed to grow up in gum trees, pine, and locusts. But this project promises to return some of this ground to productive grazing, or continue grazing on already open ground. So although counterintuitive, this project is actually pro-agriculture. Please approve this project as a commitment to the rural and the head focus of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So next on the list is...
Are you open to comments?
Sir, there's a list, after this list, after this list, you, it will be called, "Is the Everrain Open?" Next on the list is Scott Seneer. Moving on, next is Dan Titsworth. If I can get, is that the pronunciation? Okay. All right, so if you could just state your name and your address for us.
Dan Titsworth, 16087 Kings Highway. I have recently driven over 6,800 miles across the United States, and during that time, I saw scores of what it's called solar farms. Well, I think George Orwell would be proud of that, to call something like what you're suggesting, a farm. That is not a farm. It's not producing any animals, it's not producing crops, and I think that if you think you're going to raise sheep underneath them, somebody's really pulling the wool over your eyes. I do, I really think that. If you think that they're going to get sheep on that land to keep it grazed, well, then you better study up about sheep a little bit. Okay? The other thing is, I'd like to know, where are these solar panels being made? Can anyone give an answer?
China.
China. Has anyone read about the federal government's concern about what the Chinese are putting in our electronical products that we're buying here? So you, we're just going to trust China's going to send us good stuff, right? I think you better take a real close second look at this. This isn't going to do anything for King George. It's my understanding, the electricity won't even be used in this county. I don't know if that's correct, but if it isn't, then what are we gaining? You're cutting down 600 acres of trees that take in and, and give off oxygen, they take in the carbon dioxide. That's a huge chunk. I, I am totally against this. I don't believe that the solar panels are that efficient. I don't believe they are reliable. I think West Texas proved that last year, and I think that if you guys approve this, that you'll be sorry about it much later. Right now, they're called Gibson, right? What are they going to be called 10 years from now, when they're sold? Are they going to live up to all the promises that we just heard? Those were beautiful pictures of the solar panels with the flowers and the sheep underneath them. It's funny, out of all the solar farms that I saw traveling across this country, I didn't see one of them with any green grass. It's all dead. It kills it, it bakes the soil. You've got to have living soil. I don't see where these solar panels are going to provide that. And not only that, but I don't think solar panels are going to be around that much longer, anyway, because they can't be trusted to provide steady electricity that we need.
All right, Ms. Titsworth, thank you so much for your comments. Next on the list, we have Terry Morgan.
I must express my strong opposition to this project for our county. Before you, our documents highlighted the many reasons why I firmly believe this project does not align with our comprehensive plan, or the core values of our community. To begin with, our comprehensive plan emphatically emphasizes our commitment to preserving the rural character of King George. I firmly believe that this utilitarian-sized project fundamentally undermines that pivotal objective. Page 27 of the comprehensive plan, it states clearly that we must encourage and continue rural character of our rappahannock area. However, the proposed installation of approximately between two and a half and three miles solar panels along the road starkly contradicts the same. Moreover, on page 34, we are instructed to promote industrial developments within King George and the industrial park. This project stretches from the Westmoreland County line to the Jersey Road. It fails to align with that directive. Again, on page 35, we reiterate the importance of preserving the rural characteristic of King George. Installation of 890 acres of glass solar panels does not align with preservation of our rural identity. Page 41 addresses a critical point. All agricultural land must be implemented approved farm planning in accordance with the Tri-County Soil and Water Conservation Guidelines, criteria that this project neglects. Importantly, on page 24, the Virginia Association of Water and, the Tri-County, cautions conversions of prime farmland to utilitarian solar is not a strategic direction the Commonwealth should encourage. By approving this project, we are not only, we will not only be promoting such conversions, but also violating our comprehensive plan, because it's not following Tri-County. Additionally, the Farm Bureau in their 2025 policy handbook explicitly states its opposition to referring to solar panels, solar facilities as solar farm, which this project does. They also urge further studies on the impact and disposal costs associated with utilitarian solar projects. The Farm Bureau advocates that these projects should primarily be located on brown fields, landfills, parking lots. This proposed project, however, infringes on over 1,900 acres of land encroaching on our primary and secondary roads, and traverse wetlands. Furthermore, the Farm Bureau promotes avoiding the use of farmlands and forest lands for solar installations. This project intends to clear 580 acres of forestry and compromise topsoil integrity, therefore destabilizing our soil and increasing the risk of erosion and water runoff. The planned site is situated on the highly permeable soil and contains areas that severely constrain the high erosion potentials. In light of these critical issues, I assert that this project does not, does not meet with our comprehensive plan, only fails to meet the standards.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the sound list is Jeffrey Poole.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Poole. I reside at 1310 Little Page Street in Fredericksburg. My name is Jeffrey Poole, and I am here tonight representing the 300 acres that Poole-Janni families own in the proposed solar farm area. I believe our family has been good stewards of the King George acreage over the 65 years since my grandfather purchased it. As our family was in the lumber business locally for over 40 years, we successfully timbered the property and reforested numerous times. We, of course, paid our taxes, and two of our family members pay additional local taxes as they reside in Paton McLanding and Fairview Beach. In speaking for our family, we would like to emphasize our belief and concern for honoring our property rights, which we, of course, are exercising in our participation with other King George landowners to gain approvals of the 890-acre proposed Gibson solar farm. We also believe that a solar farm will benefit the need for power over the next 20 years in King George and the surrounding counties. Also, solar energy certainly is one way of bringing renewable, clean energy into our local communities. We believe that with Open Road Renewables' history in corresponding parts of the state, it should show the local county officials and King George citizens that they are dealing with a very reputable company. As many of you know, Ryan Gilchrist has now, for years, met with local officials, local citizens, local landowners for and landowners against the solar farm, always with grace, trying to solve the concerns of all. As myself and other family members have now attended at least four meetings, including the last Planning Commission vote in March, and the recent Board of Supervisors meeting in April, I have two other observations. First, the first one is Supervisor Ken Stroud's thoughts on the potential educational value of having a solar farm in which its boundaries and upkeep are contained and kept up by a sheep farm. Mr. Stroud's idea was that the local school kids could have a field trip to the solar sheep farm, all the while learning about renewable energy resources and the benefits that a flock of sheep could bring from the animal world. A great idea, I thought at that time, and I still do tonight. My second observation is from the March Planning and Commission meeting and the vote, obviously I was happy with, on 5 to 4 for approval. I did have one concern from the ongoing discussions that night around the potential tax benefits for the solar farm could bring. Open Road has stated that King George would receive up to $500,000 per year for possibly 20 years. I felt that the Planning Commission did not see these tax revenues as a big benefit to the county's coffers during that meeting. I will admit that I am ignorant to the overall taxes having been collected in the proposed solar farm of 890 acres, but I'm assuming that most of the acreage is taxed as agricultural land, and therefore is, at least today, not generating $500,000 a year in taxes. Well, if I am wrong and out and left field on this observation, please forgive. Finally, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and of course, I hope you will vote again for approval.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Mark Morgan.
My name is Mark Morgan. Address is 14523 Kings Highway in the Shiloh District. I'd like to just voice my opinion against this project, and there's other reasons that I'm going to get into in just a second, but first off, what you were told a few minutes ago, that they did not use a third party to do background searches, is incorrect. They used a process called Ben Verified, which is a third-party organization. So what he told you, this company told you, is that they did not use a third party, when actually, they did use a third party. How do you feel about that? Just being lied to, right there. What I want you to ask is, does this project benefit the county? First off, I think the answer is no. None of this electricity that's generated is going to King George. It strictly goes to the grid, not to King George. We will get promised, I guess, up to a certain amount of money, but have we checked with other counties to find out where they have met their projections according to what they were told? And I know someone in the tax division there, and they have not received what they have been told. Right now, we're supposed to get 500,000. That is less than 1% of our budget. As a matter of fact, it's .003% of our budget. Basically, it's $50 per household, is what it is, and that is one penny on the tax. So the risk-reward, you got to really ask, is the reward of one penny on the tax worth the risk that could happen? Another thing would be environmental. There's going to be environmental issues, and they're not just timbering. I can appreciate timbering for a business. I, I like that, but you don't clear-cut the land, and then you don't scrape the topsoil. So there is, they're not just timbering. Timbering, you know, they leave all the undergrowth, all the wildlife stays there. Uh-uh, it's not going to happen here. 600 acres is clear-cut, gone. They are grading. As a matter of fact, they have detention basins. What are those detention basins for? They're to hold and retain water for 25-year floodplain. Okay, so now we say, oh, great, no more flooding. What's the opposite of that, though? What's going to happen to all the wetlands? For all the water that used to go to them wetlands? Where's it going to go now? It going to go in those detention ponds? So what happens to all the wetlands? What happens to the creeks that no longer get the water? There's going to be an environmental impact. We just had the question, is it worth the risk? Everything downstream from that, everything east, drying up, because that's what's going to happen.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Mr. Gary Sitzman. I apologize, sir, if we could, if we could have your...
I have trouble with it myself.
If we could have your name and your address, sir.
My name is Gary Sitzman. I live at 4 Fitch U. Trail in Fredericksburg, Virginia. I'm here because we own 87 acres that is adjacent to the project. It's not part of the project, but it's adjacent to it on Route 631, and we are in favor of the project. I've tracked the project from the time when they had the library meetings and gave us extensive amount of information and answered questions. Overall, I can't predict the future, but if, if it's tied to the past, I see we have a good running group here. I've looked at adjacent projects in Spotsylvania, I'm sorry, I've read about the Spotsylvania, that was notorious as well, many years ago, when that project was underway. That was notorious as well, many years ago when that project was underway. Haven't heard anything bad about it in the paper. I've seen the site in Westmoreland County across from the old school on Route 3. I've seen projects in Essex County, near Tappahannock. None of them look any different than if I was mowing lawn under the, well fenced and well lit. Now, these, those projects are small by comparison to this, I agree, but that's another good sign. There was an extensive article in the Wall Street Journal, by coincidence, on June 2nd, unbiased, about solar farms in the southern states, and I have the article with me. If anyone wants it, I can leave it with you. It gave the pluses and minuses, and overall, you can get any answer you want depending upon your biases and your objectives. We bought the land in, about 20 years ago, as an investment, as we buy stock. We saw, I worked at the base, we saw King George as one of the growing areas, and I believe that's what's happening with the new bridge, with the traffic on Route 3. I'm sorry, the county is growing. I mean, is that supposed to be a negative? I thought that was a positive. You have new schools, and you're prospering. Thank you.
James Shaw, James Monroe District, speaking in my capacity as a member only of the Economic Development Authority, nor as a King George taxpayer. As a member of the EDA, I and the rest of the appointed members are on the lookout for businesses and developers such as these that are providing and bringing in those kind of projects that have minimal impact on our lean infrastructure for our rural county. All of the landowners that I've heard over the past couple months who are involved in this, and this gentleman, you know, adjacent property, looks at the positive side of this as a way to preserve the rural character. We're looking here at a unique kind of thing. The sheep folks know this, they have the experience, years of experience, on taking land that's marginal and converting it and using smart, scientifically proven techniques to improve the land. After 40 years, this land is going to be better than when they found it. I challenge, I've read the science, sir. I challenge those people to read the science, to do the study, to see, you know, if you want the sheep to thrive, you make sure that you got forage down on the ground that they can eat. And their formula is, they start with a couple hundred and they end up with 400 to 600 because the soil heals, the soil improves, the soil sequesters carbon, the topsoil gets deeper, all kinds of fun things that a whole lot of farmers in this day and age are not aware of. And this is an education thing that has to happen in this county, and I'm in the process of talking to a bunch of people so that that kind of process can happen. We've got a wonderful 91.4% ag land resource that I think is grossly underutilized and can really produce a whole lot more if treated a little bit differently. These guys are bringing in a formula. They know what they're doing. We need to do more of that in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Last on the sign-up sheet here is Mr. Steve Hickman. All right, so that concludes the people on the, on the sign-up list. Floor is now open to any others who wish to speak.
Whoops. Well, not much, oh, sorry, Rose Payne, 15123 Hazelnut Lane. Not much has changed with my story, except now I can claim 87 years as a resident, because I'm a year older.
Congrats, ma'am.
I grew up in Sealston on a farm. I married, thank you, I married into a family that had cows, and I had never known about them, but I like it. And it's not because I dislike it that I'm here tonight. But if you grew up where I did in Sealston, I've heard a lot of talk about rural county. We lost that a long time ago, people. If you drive down Route 3, when I was young, it was nothing but farms. When I went to school, I drove through Hopyard on the bus. That was farm. I too love the idea of a rural county, but just as he just stated, I'm sorry, we're changing. I am not here to tell you that we are a rural county. I wish we were totally, but we're not. But I am also here to tell you that we are going out of the cattle business, and if this project is not accepted, then by right, I can put houses. I'd love to keep it in agriculture, and that's why Open Roads appealed to us, because we love to keep Cameron just as it is, agriculture. And I'm sorry, but yes, sheep are animals, and they're not cows, but they do the same thing to the property that my cows do. And we have grass, because those cows fertilize it nicely with rain from the Lord and the cows. But these folks I've been dealing with for almost five years, I guess it is now, with Ryan, they're good people, and you know that. Everything you have asked them to do, they've tried to do. They have tried to accommodate whatever you felt they needed to do. They're honest people, and they are bringing in a new kind of energy, something that we're going to have to face in the future. But I do want you to understand that we can't continue farming. I don't have a young little male coming behind us. We're getting older, I mean, 87, and I've been over at that farm three days in a row. I love it, but I don't know how much longer I can do that. But I would like for you to really consider this project, because we can keep rural, and you know, talk about cutting trees. Have you been up 218? Have you been up there to see the trees that were cut? 500 houses were going to go there, but that changed there next to me now. That was a farm, ladies and gentlemen, but now it's going to have 99 buildings. I live on a farm, and that farm is now no longer there. So we are changing, and I hope that you will keep my farm in agricultural and approve this project. I don't know what else I can tell you about myself, except that I'm old and I'm wordy and I'm, but I, I'm passionate about my land, and I hope you'll preserve it. Thank you for listening to me one more time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Are there any others?
I'm just a placeholder for this gentleman.
Sure.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm up here from Florida. I have a house up here, and solar energy is a big thing down there, and so is the fight to keep it under the control of Duke Energy. All right? And I applaud these young men here, because they did a good presentation, all right? But you've got to ask yourself, are they in any way associated with Dominion Energy? Is there any way that they can be used for Dominion Energy to get in and get this land? All right? The other thing is, I abut, I think that's the right word, I abut this solar farm, and the spring that feeds Eastview Drive is on their land. All right? It comes up, and then it goes into my land, and it winds through Eastview almost two miles till it gets to the end and it disappears. All right? And I want to make sure that spring never stops, because I've got a whole bunch of trees and animals, vegetation that depend on that. All right? And the last thing is, I work for Row Concrete, and I've been all over this area, and there are so many open areas in King George that cannot support farming, and they cannot support houses. They're like the gravel pits up there, all right? I don't see why you haven't considered places like that to put this solar farm on. And I've seen the solar farm down 17 between Horns and Yorktown, and it's a nice-looking project. It sits on the left, and it goes on forever. So these boys, they'll do a good job if you let them, but at the same time, I really think there's other areas that you should be putting them. You know, you're in charge, and you're older than they are, all right? But this is progress. And down in Florida, I'm doing good, down there in Florida, all right? When I went down there in 2008, we got us a nice little house from 1951, and we were happy in a nice neighborhood. Well, now, the downtown has nine high-rise buildings going up, over 42 stories, all right? We don't have the water, we don't have the sewage resources, and they're just moving down there, and they don't care. And that's what you've got up here at Hopyard. It's normal for those people, there's nothing wrong with them. It's just that they're used to being side by side. All right? Thank you.
Sir, if I can get your name, your name. We didn't get your name.
Oh, oh, yeah. Jim Taylor and Linda Prunkert, and it's 14395 Eastview Drive, King George.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Tremper. I live in the Shiloh District. I was originally not going to come because I'm not feeling the greatest, but here I am, and I am glad I did, because what recently was just said and what was heard about being a third party for looking people up, would you like to see my cell phone? Let me read it to you. Amy, this is Ryan Gilchrist, following up on the discussion of solar supervisors hearing two weeks ago. I am the developer of the project, and I wanted to offer and get together about your questions and concerns. We could look at the site plan, review the binding commitments being made by the project, and/or walk the site. Let me know if you are interested. How did he get my cell phone number? My house number, I could have understood if you looked that up online, but cell phone numbers are very hard to find online. Can I come up and show you where he got it from?
No, ma'am, just on your comments.
Ben Verified, what Mark said. I'm pretty sure, and it's a third-party search engine that you said you did not use. You've never seen that?
They have background checks. We didn't do background checks.
Again, it's a third-party engine.
Search engine.
Third-party.
Google's a third-party.
That you used for my cell phone number. You also sent me.
Mr. Chair, point of order, public comment need to be addressed to the chairman and not some other members of the public.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. So he used another search engine to get my personal cell phone number, which I did not appreciate. The other thing that I have concerns about is the hazmat of the area. We do live around that area. If there are any toxins that go into the runoff, I'm on a well, I'm not on county water. It also goes on to Eastview Drive, which I have family and friends on Eastview Drive. There are pictures that I have taken of driveways where you just get a normal rain, and his driveway is completely flooded. It is, you can't even see his driveway. So if we want to put runoff on that, what are they going to do for Eastview Drive? Is there anything in there for Eastview Drive? Nothing? So Eastview Drive is just going to float away if we just get a normal Virginia rain with this runoff? There's wetlands down there, there's people who can barely, the road falls apart, I can tell you. I know people who have to fix that driveway because there is so much erosion on it. I ask for you guys not to vote against this.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any others?
Good evening. My name is Howard Thomas. I live over on Roundhill Road in the Shiloh District.
Sir.
I've been following the progress of this application for a while, and I appreciate the transparency and the responsiveness that I've seen from Open Road Renewables through Mr. Gilchrist. I recently raised some concerns with him about the project, and he gave me a prompt and thorough reply that addressed all of my concerns and provided some additional information that every time I encounter this company and their presentations and what they are doing to accommodate the issues that are brought up, I'm convinced that they're doing the right thing. I support this project, and I asked the Planning Commission to forward the application to the Board of Supervisors recommending approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn McGee, and I live in the Shiloh District. I'm here to speak in support of the Open Roads solar project. I appreciate all the time and efforts that have been expended by Open Roads to request a special exemption, twice now, despite the thorough presentation documentation that was submitted the first time. I also appreciate Open Roads for remaining positive and upholding their forthcoming, open, and honest to anyone who wants to know more. This county was unable to fund 19 requested positions for the upcoming fiscal year. The 28,000-plus citizens, including the handful who are against this project, cannot afford for this project to be denied. This project will bring millions of dollars to this county, and even one penny on the tax is better than nothing, which, if utilized in a fiscally responsible manner, will allow us to take care of those who are already here. Turning the current vacant land into agriculture and timbering land is something the property owners could do very well right now themselves. This project will not bring more homes and more people, which would not be able to be supported by any department in this county. I was blessed in 2020 to have obtained a special exemption from this county for my personal property to help my mother during a hardship. Citizens should be respected enough by the local government to make decisions for our own property, which we work day in and day out to maintain and pay taxes on. Open Roads has provided answers to every opposing argument. They have addressed every aspect of this project for which there were concerns. This project should be unanimously approved if for nothing but the future of this county. Thank you all up there for being respectful to all speakers, it speaks volumes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any others at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Al Hales. I live at 7115 Kitchen Point Road. I'm the president of Hales Hamilton Enterprises Incorporated, which is a small development company in King George. Over the past 15 or 20 years, we've developed several small minor subdivisions on A1 and A2 property on Bald Eagle Drive, Musco Place, and Jersey Road. We currently own 160 acres in Jersey, which is slated to be part of this project. We had originally bought this property with the intent to subdivide it into large lots, 10-acre lots. We were delayed in doing that because of issues with access. We finally got the access issues resolved. I have checked with the county staff, and we, by right, can develop 10 or more large lots on the property, on the A1 property, without any requirement for public hearings or planning commission or board of supervisors approval. All we have to do is be in compliance with the specifics of the subdivision ordinance. I would prefer to see this go as a solar project rather than more residential. The county has, you know, as a resident of the county for the last 20 years, and as an employee in the county in the last, over the last 50 years, I like the county the way it is, and I'd like to see it. I like the county the way it is and I'd like to see it preserved as much of that in the future as possible. The question really becomes, you know, how do you do that? There's a demand, there's a demand for residential property that's not going to go away. And people want to move to King George for all the reasons that we love it. And so it really becomes a choice, not, it's not a choice of agriculture versus solar. I think it's really a choice of residential or not. You know, if we can, if we can preserve, you know, hundreds or 1,000 acres through a land conservancy as non-residential property, then that's, I think that's a great outcome. And that's, if we don't do that, if we don't go down that route, then I think more residential development is inevitable. You know, that would be the logical use for our property if it wasn't converted to solar. So I think, I think it's in the best interest of the long-term rural nature of the county to go with as an alternative to more residential.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Alright. Are there any others?
Hello. My name's Ruth Titsworth, 16087 Kings Highway. I too was checked. I spoke at a couple meetings ago. So my cellphone number is out, my email and my home address has all been contacted. So I moved here, I bought property in 1993. We moved into the Shiloh District right by McGinnis Antique Barn. We bought some property from Lee Bolger. She had chopped her farm up, had about 127 acres. She did nine 10-acre lots. I was the beneficiary of one. I grew up in Arlington, Virginia. When my husband and I were overseas, we came back, we couldn't afford to live there. We lived in Clinton, Maryland. When the things got dark, it was really a bad place to live. We came over the bridge and I was like, what a beautiful place. This is heaven. This is beautiful. We went down Route 3. Lee had a plywood sign said lots for sale, pulled in there. She said, yep, we got a lot right here. Beautiful. It was a farm. I bought 10 acres on that farm. My husband and I, we built a house. We have our two children. We raised our children. We raised our granddaughter. Our two boys now live in King George. They're raising their children. What is wrong with people like me wanting to live in a rural area and have a home that has 10 acres? We actually loved it so much, we bought the 10 acres on this side and the 10 acres on that side and another seven. So not necessarily do you divide a farm up that every 10 acres is going to have a house. But why, what is the problem with homes? What is the problem with families like me who would like to get out of Stafford and Fairfax and different places and live on 10 acres and be able to have a garden and be able to raise your children? The only thing you have to worry about is I'm going into the woods with snakes. Somebody else said, I worked at Westmoreland Berry Farm for 11 years as a tour guide. They said the sheep farm would be wonderful to have school tours. Are they going to be able to go inside of the fence where the sheep are and where the solar panels are to have school tours? I don't think so. I don't think that they're going to be allowed in there. I don't know. We also have the contract that one of these, that probably all of these people signed that say about the hazardous material, that the landowners know what these hazardous things are. They know when they're signing and waving that, you know, they're responsible for it. Hazardous material, any kind of health issues that happen, any accidents that may occur. What kind of accidents? It hasn't been said what kind of accidents might happen. What kind of accidents can happen on the solar farm? Do any of you, does anybody know? The risk of the electromagnetic exposure? And he's saying about EMFs with a phone. Is this solar farm, solar project going to be a little bit bigger than my phone? What this is going to emit, the EMFs? So I would say vote no for this.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any others?
Nelson Mills, Monroe District, 12026 Great Eastern Way. And what you're seeing there is some of the concerns written down here. The clearing, one of the biggest concerns, obviously, erosion and runoff. A gentleman stated before me that's for this, that he's driven past Essex and Campbell County and some of the other solar farms. And it doesn't take very long online for you to go out online and search the issues. We have photos, all the erosion issues in those counties. So, and it's a known fact that 70% of all solar farms in the state of Virginia don't meet the soil and erosion. They got issues right now. Some concern with that. You can also look at, down at White Marsh, down at Newport News, big solar farm down there, right now hitting the news. It's all over, Virginia Beach News, the homeowners down there complaining about all the noise from the transmissions coming off of solar farms. So another issue. And a gentleman here stated, we didn't have any suits or issues against them. No, they don't, but their contractor does as part of Virginia Dominion out in Louisa County. That solar farm out there is a $15 million lawsuit. Same company, it's going to clear the land for these guys, you know? I'm hearing no, but, and then I agree with what Mr. Morgan said. Is it really worth the issue to the county financially? What little bit you're getting off of this? What are the benefits to the county for this? Those are my concerns. So I'm definitely opposed to it. And I appreciate the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, are there any others? Yes, sir.
Hello, board. And I appreciate y'all's courtesy and respect, everybody. Yes, thank you. My name is Billy Clift, a generation and generation citizen here in King George County. I'm at 13188 Salem Church Road, King George, Virginia. I like to start off with, I am catching up with Ms. Payne at 56 years old. And I'll get there one day. But, so concerns about this project, I'm probably, I don't want to sit up here and reiterate a lot of what you heard. A lot of the concerns are legitimate. Nothing personal to anybody. I know most people in this room. But there's integrity issues here over the years. And a company has had five years to get it right. And they keep getting another chance, another chance, another chance. And they keep coming back with modifications to their plan. The erosion issues are a big risk. There's, and there's certain phases of the project where those erosion issues are bigger risks than in the end. There's issues with the project from start, start to finish. You know, there's statistics out there about the waste. You know, is this really a green project? I'm all for green. But this is not technology. It looks like it's sustainable. And the fact that most of these projects would not exist without grants, tax credits and money being provided from our taxpayer dollars. And in the end, we may have to end up spending more of our taxpayers' money to clean up the mess that the potential of this humongous project, this is large. For whatever anybody in King George County thinks is big, go down 81 and look at a 30 or 40-acre solar farm, utility solar farm. I mean, this is a huge project. And the risk and the sacrifice of land that's here in King George County is not worth it. It's not worth, you know, the tax revenue is minimal. And if we're willing to risk our county for no reward, it's just not a good decision. And it's not a big business, good business deal financially and the risks are not worth it. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others at this time? Seeing that there are none, oh, okay.
My name is Carol James. I live at the corner of Prim Road and Big Timber Road. I haven't been to any of these meetings and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. So I don't know what kind of things you've talked about regarding the ecosystem in our area. We are a county that has been trying to remain rural. We're a county that just simply to get a septic, you have to get a special use permit. Because we're not just King George County. We're part of the whole Chesapeake watershed. This runoff that they're talking about, it's not just going to impact us, but the entire ecosystem in the area if there's a disaster. It's going to go into the aquifer that most of us in rural King George County drink from. This is our wells. Now, they say they're making these basins to catch the water. Well, how many times have we had huge water runoff happen after simple rain, hurricanes? Where does that water go? Well, guess what? It's going to get flushed into our watershed. It's going to go into what we use to drink and live by. You have to think about that. I have a bachelor's degree in biology. I've studied ecosystems. When I first graduated from college, I went and did a research study on Quantico Base. We were studying the impact of simple bivouac procedures that happened on the base. That was small. We're talking about one or two acres. They're talking of thousands. So the impact is huge, not just to us, but to our entire area. Please consider the damage that could happen. I have heard nothing about the big picture from these people today. I don't know if you've discussed it in the past, but please look into the long-term effects that could happen to our fauna, to our plants, to our wildlife, to our water, to our very existence here in King George County when you make your decision. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, are there any others who wish to speak at this time? Alright, seeing that there are none, the public comment period for application Z-2024-00184 is now closed to the applicant. Do you wish to address any of those? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We do have some people online.
Fair enough.
I'll say in advance that we are having problems with this device. So hopefully they will be able to present their full public comment.
Alright, so the individual who's online, if you can state your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, if you could reopen, officially reopen-
Yes, yes, I apologize. So the public comment period for application Z-2024-00184 has now been reopened for those who are online. The first individual, if you can recognize yourselves by stating your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
The first name I see is Delara Pedovan. Can you unmute yourself?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you. Yes, hello, my name is Delara Pedovan. I am a resident of King George at Hoppy Lane in the Shiloh District. And this is the second meeting I have attended about the Gibson Solar Project. The first one was the April 1st meeting of the Board of Supervisors, at which time I became aware of the amount of opposition to the solar project. The people there at that meeting, some of them are in the room tonight also opposing the project are friends and neighbors that my husband and I have known and associated with for decades. Just to back up, that I did ask for your favorable support of the project when I wrote to you on February 11th. Thank you. But the people who are opposing are people that my husband and I have known for decades and people I know, I care for and respect very much. So I listened very earnestly to their concerns. And the information about stray voltage became a big concern. And there is a video circulating now through their efforts by a man named Dave Stetzer, who's an electrical engineer. If it is true that this electricity that sometimes grounded into the earth can travel up to three miles or more through the land and the waterways, then there's legitimate concern about the impact to wildlife and fish throughout the Shiloh District and beyond. But Mr. Stetzer in the video also maintains that regulations and methods exist to protect against these high frequencies, potentially by solar-generated electricity. Some of those include like a five-wire system or an oversized neutral wire, so on. And most importantly, about having filters on the electrical panels. Also, it's important that Mr. Stetzer mentions that there is regulation and rules in place to address all of this by the National Electrical Safety Code and the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers. Now, I am a nurse. I am, and before that, a farmer and a music teacher. So I'm not an electrical engineer and I don't pretend to understand everything that Mr. Stetzer is explaining. But I do understand it's imperative to ensure that the Gibson Solar Project and any subsequent owners would follow and adhere to these industry regulations for the health and safety of everyone involved. And I also understand that what one person may do can impact many and the importance of family and community for each of us in this room. The impact of Gibson Solar on our family has been deep. It took us a long time to make a decision as a family to agree to become part of the project. And for a number of reasons, my husband has now lost his confidence in Open Road Renewables and wholeheartedly regrets our decision tying onto this project. I personally am distressed over the level of strife that this proposal has created. No, as it has been famously said, that a house divided against itself cannot stand. And what seemed to me such a beneficial proposal to King George now appears to have caused more harm than good and construction has not even begun yet. Although my heart still wishes this project could go through and bring positive outcomes.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Your three minutes have expired. Chris, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
Kelsey Traynor, would you like to have your public comment? Kelsey Traynor?
Hi, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Hello, hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
I can't. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. So my name is Kelsey Traynor, 8078 Patzpatanzi, and I'm the grazer who will be farming the proposed solar facility. I've been working on the Gibson Solar Project for nearly two years now and I've had a direct role on, on different aspects of this facility with pasture management and all the agricultural takes side of things. And this project truly is designed with my part of the project in mind. This isn't a gimmick, it's real long-term agricultural use. Some people say that my part of the project is a distraction, but I will be raising livestock, specifically sheep, which are just as much of an agricultural commodity as cattle or hogs. There's simply less comment on this side of the state. That doesn't make them less valuable, though. I'll be running 400 to 600 head block here, strategically managed year-round. That's real food, fiber, and land stewardship happening. I would also like to add that in the 2025 Farm Bureau policy by, that I helped write, states this on page 26 in the 2025 Farm Bureau Policy Handbook. We support the Commonwealth of Virginia converting a stakeholder work group to develop a definition of agricultural takes to ensure solar projects categorized as agricultural takes are true dual-use that are producing and selling an agricultural product, which I will be doing. We support more Virginia-based research on the economic viability of agricultural takes, on utility solar sites. We support more information or demonstration sites being made available to landowners. We believe that bona fide agricultural take installations will be more sustainable for the coexistence of solar energy production and agricultural and forestry production. So people often say that they want to keep this county rural, but the reality is most of those are the same people that aren't willing to lease land to first-generation farmers like me. The solar project is giving me access to land that I'd otherwise not have access to. So yes, I may be categorized as the solar grazer, but during landing season, when I'm working 20-hour days in all weather, I will gladly invite anyone who thinks that this isn't farming to come out and help. There's a real lack of understanding in this county about what agriculture looks like today. Farming isn't just corn and cows anymore. It's diverse, adaptive, evolving, regenerative, and sustainable. If we truly want to keep King George rural, we need to start supporting young producers, not shutting down every opportunity that doesn't fit someone's outdated image of farming and agriculture. This project keeps land and agriculture. It puts food and fiber into the market and helps keep local farmers like me working. That's rural. And that's exactly what we say we want to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris, do we have any others?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ryan McGill.
Good evening, Ryan McGill, Shiloh District, speaking in favor of the project. I'd like to commend Open Roads on their outreach, the amount of effort they've put to follow up on directions that they were given by the Board of Supervisors, to host more public events, to try and reach out and inform the public and to answer questions and comments of those opposed. Previously, when I spoke before you guys, it was about the work that Open Roads did to eliminate the need to go through the RPA by working with landowners such as myself and surrounding neighbors so that that area wouldn't be impacted. They took the information that, and then they adapted. And I, any, any good policy or plan should take in information and adapt so that it's the best possible product. And I think that they continue to do that and I commend them for that. With my time left, I want to address a couple of things that I've heard this evening. One specific was about clear-cutting the land, about stripping the land. It's important to understand that laid out in the conditions, only 200 acres can be opened at a time and that they will remediate that soil immediately. Speaking of the conditions, for those that are looking for more information, I suggest reading a Virginia Tech white paper that's going through peer review. Right now, when you look at the recommendations in that paper and compare them to the conditions, Open Roads is doing a phenomenal job. Another comment that I heard this evening was a concern about where this equipment was coming from, such as China. The Board of Supervisors had that same exact concern. So a condition is, if you look at the conditions, it stated that they will not purchase any equipment from an adversarial nation. The last thing that I'm going to touch on real quick is something that I was concerned about personally and I heard a gentleman bring it up this evening about property values being impacted and people wanting to sell their property. So I looked into that as someone who owns real estate. And I looked into the, to the, the surrounding area of the Spazavania Project, West Catharpan Road area. And if you look at the values of those properties and what they've sold from, in 2020, they're around 300,000 and they're over 500,000 now. And there's many, you could just go up and down West Catharpan Road, Deer Park Road, all in that surrounding project and look at that. So that, that's just a, a false fear that's being put out there, unfortunately. Thank you for your time. I ask that you please support the project.
Thank you, sir. Chris, do we have any others?
There's someone named Dave, but I don't have a last name. Dave, would you like to have a public comment? He says no.
Okay. All right. And Chris, could you advise us on any others?
Someone named Joey. Joey, would you like to have a public comment? He hasn't responded. I have a feeling that that may be the last of the people online, Mr. Chairman.
Very well, Chris, thank you so much. At this time, public comment for those online as well as within the room is now closed on application Z dash two zero two four dash zero zero one eight four. To the applicant, if you would like to respond to any of this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Mike Volpe. I'm a co-founder of Open Road Renewables. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the Morgan family for taking us up on our offer to come out to their property, to walk the land and understand their concerns further. I'd like to talk about the integrity concern and sort of unpack that so that everybody has all of the full information. There was a question, I believe, asked by Planning Commissioner Fox, did we use any third parties for background checks? And Ryan and I said, no, we did not. I believe it was the April 1st Board of Supervisors hearing where there was a petition that was read aloud where there were approximately 300 signatories who communicated their opposition to the project. They did not come and speak against it, but they signed a petition that Ms. Morgan and some of her friends read aloud. I directed Mr. Gilchrist to research and reach out to every single one of those signatories. He used a third-party resource called Ben Verified to get their home address and any other information he had so he could do outreach. There was a concern from the board that despite our 14 months of community engagement, formally since the application was submitted in January of 2024, that there was insufficient outreach. The concern of us reaching out to people by sending them letters and sending them text messages is directly in line with how we do business, which is transparent, honest, community engagement. Mr. Cliff said, nothing personal, but there are integrity issues. I don't see it as nothing personal. I'm a co-founder in the company. I care a lot about the integrity of the company. I want to clear up that point. I really appreciate you guys putting all the time and thought into this project. I believe what is in front of you is an improved project directly responsive to the concerns that have been presented. I want to connect one final dot for you and then leave it to your discussion. There's a really novel element to the improvements to the project with regards to soil health and stormwater runoff prevention. The best way to keep the soil on site following disturbance is to have root growth. The sediment basins are there as a last-ditch measure to prevent sediment from running into the watershed. But all of the work that we put into the soil health through participation from a lot of members of the community will benefit the forage production, but it will also benefit the stormwater runoff risk. We are extremely happy to present the improvements of the project to the community. And we believe that the permanent ag preservations of this, elements of this project is a novel approach and one that could be replicated across the Commonwealth to keep rural lands rural and provide land access to young farmers who were not the fortunate sons that didn't inherit land. Land is very expensive and the solar project is funding the land access for the young members of the farming community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, I am going to open the floor for comments from the commission, Planning Commission at large. Ms. Flattery has the floor.
I just have a question for staff. Can you respond to the comment regarding the comprehensive plan on page 41? Continue to implement the Chesapeake Bay Overlay Zoning District, King George County zoning ordinance requirement that all agricultural land implement farm plans that have been approved by the tri-county city soil and water conservation district. Can you give an explanation for that and give us some confidence that, that that has been adhered to?
Sure. So the whole, King George as a whole is within the Chesapeake Bay Overlay Zoning District. So my understanding is that when farmers implement farm plans, they do need to work with the conservation district. I don't know the extent of the farms that are in the project and what kind of project they are doing with the Soil and Water Conservation District, but that's the point of why it's in there, to get them to work with them on farm plans.
And have they done that?
That I don't know, if they've each individually have farm plans with the...
Is there a requirement for them to do that in the future as this is still going to be a grazing operation?
You know, yeah. For farm plans that go into land use, right? Yeah, the USDA and Soil and Water Conservation, if a farmer wants to get into the land use program, they need to work with them on that.
So you're saying this doesn't apply?
That, what we're talking about tonight is a special exception. So I didn't really get into if each of the properties have been complying with this comp plan suggestion.
I'm only bringing it up because someone else did, that I want to make sure that we're following our comprehensive plan.
In regards, yes, in regards to the land use taxation and the requirement to have a farm plan, yes, we are.
May she have the floor back? Thank you. Mr. Fox, you have the floor?
Yeah, I also have a question for staff. Just to kind of refresh memories on this. Was a third-party environmental impact assessment performed for the project? And could you tell us a bit about what went into that, who did it? What it, what it looked at and particularly coming back to the issue of erosion and runoff and soil, soil quality and so on?
A lot of the review was done before Kenny and I were employed here. So I'd kind of have to refer back to Ryan and Mike, but I do know that our third-party engineering contractors did review the application as a whole. And they will be reviewing it again if it goes to site plan stage. You might want to ask the applicant about details. I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here.
Presumably the Board of Supervisors will have that when they are asked to revote on this. Is that right?
That's part of the application package, yes.
Right, okay.
You, are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay, all right. So, um, something I rarely do, I will yield my comments is that we, we have a very intelligent commission here. My thoughts are, it boils down to two things. Does it bring revenue to the county? And does it harm the environment? To me, I think those questions have been answered, whether it be for or against. The fact that they are before us again is, is basically going to take, technicality. We've, we've voted on this before. It was five to four. And I, I don't see a need for us to drag this on for another, another session. So with that being said, I am going to ask for a motion on the floor, either for or against, either way, to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, point order, I, I think before, I think before, per the bylaws, before you have discussion by the members and before you move the motion, you just technically need to close the public hearing as a whole.
I, I did.
You close public comment, but not the public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry to be a stickler.
So, uh, you said public hearing. So the public hearing for application Z dash two zero two four dash zero zero one eight four is now closed. Now I am appealing to my members, board members, yes, yes, sir.
So you're, you're absolutely.
You might, you might.
This has all been before us before and it's just a quirk that it's coming back for a second go-around. I, I just want to make for the record that there's a lot of positives. There's still some negatives about this project. My biggest concern is the size. It is, I mean, given that this is going to be our first real solar project in the county, it is very large, a number of parcels broken out into individual plots with, with, you know, solar panels on it. It's almost like, you know, approving like 20 individual solar projects is the way it feels to me. So I just think there's some risk that we don't have a track record understanding, you know, what the impact of this is. With that, you know, I'll let it go. But that, that's the concern I want to put on the record for the supervisors' consideration. Thank you.
It was my understanding, Ryan, that the Farm Bureau endorsed this project. I think I heard that from Kelsey. They...
Bro, as part of, I think they're endorsing this project.
Yeah, okay. And the, since we last voted, I think the tightening up the conservancy thing with the North America Land Trust addressed one of my major concerns about enforcement. So I think it's an improved application from our prior review.
All right. I think, actually, the discussion period has been, was closed. So, um, I'm appealing again to the commission to make a motion either for or against. So I need, I'm looking for the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I don't usually do the motions, but I will jump in on this one. I move that we adopt resolution PC 09 dash 25 to forward the application Z two zero two four zero zero one eight four to the King George Board of Supervisors with a favorable, favorable recommendation. I'd like to add two stipulations to that, that the county attorney addressed with the Board of Supervisors a concern about the addition to the conservancy of the residential parcel, one per parcel, that that get clarified and locked down to satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney. And also with the, with the addition of hazardous chemical testing being... chemical testing being added to the soil and water testing as part of the proffer statement.
A motion has been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Ms. Leduke, if we can have a roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Decorda.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Pallavoda.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Nay.
Mr. Maffet.
Nay.
Ms. Flatley.
Nay.
Mr. Myers, absent. Mr. Nicely.
Aye.
And Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries five three.
Motion carries with a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval. To the applicants, we thank you for your time and efforts. To the constituents, we thank you for your comments. All right. At this time, I am going to...
Sorry, sir, I just had to, we also need a motion, this is the second sentence in the draft motion of staff report to move that the Planning Commission finds this project to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. We could do that as a separate motion.
Okay. So we need, we need to make a motion.
Yeah.
So I need, I need a motion to be seconded.
I make a motion that we find the application in compliance...
Substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
With the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Based on the preservation element and the soil improvement.
A second.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Okay, I'll take a roll again. Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Myers, absent. Mr. Pallavoda.
Aye.
Mr. Decorda. Mr. Maffet. Ms. Flatley.
Nay.
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Nicely.
Aye.
And Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you so much. Again, to the constituents of King George County, we thank you for your comments and your participation in this process. At this time, I'm going to request that we do a 10-minute recess before we go, we are, my birthday is tomorrow, I'll be 55 years young, bladder is not in control like it used to be, so.
I think I've got a few years.
Yes, ma'am, just a few, just a few. So take 10.[775.88]
Session is about to begin. All right. Do we have all our members back? Majority of us, anyway. Okay, next on the agenda for public hearing. It's Resolution PC ten dash two five application Z dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero two two four. Dogren in the innovation hub rezoning application. So, Ms. Ledoux, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to just give a brief overview of the next four applications. And then I think the applicant's planning on addressing everything in one chunk. But we do have to have separate public hearings for each item.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so representatives from Dogren Innovation Hub have submitted several applications that are being presented before you this evening. The first is an application to rezone with proffers approximately four hundred seventy nine acres of land located on the west side of Route three oh one, generally at the intersection of Route three oh one and Washington Mill Road to industrial. The second is a comprehensive plan amendment to add tax parcel seventeen dash twenty four to the Claydale Primary Settlement area. If the properties do get rezoned to industrial, the third application is for a special exception permit to construct a data center campus, to authorize an increase in building height greater than fifty feet, and to allow an increase in the ten-foot height limitation for walls and fences to allow the screening of outdoor equipment. Their last request is for an exception from the Planning Commission to the Highway Corridor Overlay District Regulations to allow for more than one entrance onto Route three oh one. In support of these requests, the applicant has provided a zoning and generalized development plan with a written narrative, a phasing plan, a traffic impact analysis, which has been reviewed and approved by VDOT, voluntary proffer statement, and a noise analysis. The full application package has been reviewed by our third-party engineers along with all county and state reviewing agencies. The applicants have also been working closely with the fire chief to address his concerns. The property is currently undeveloped but lies in an area that has been designated as an economic development incentive technology zone by the Board of Supervisors. The property is also mostly in the Claydale Settlement area, which is designated for commercial and industrial development. The applicants have presented to the Planning Commission and have hosted several community outreach meetings. And they're also on the agenda to present to the Board of Supervisors at their meeting next Tuesday. Staff has received several emails and letters of support for this project, which have been shared with you via email. There are several actions that the Commission will need to vote on this evening should you choose to, and we can tackle those one at a time with the help of legal counsel once we get there. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Over for the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, Chair Williams, members of the Planning Commission, and members of the King George Community. My name is Nick Over. I'm here with the Dogren West team. I'm excited to give this presentation tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. The proposed data center campus is situated along the west side of Route three oh one, just a couple miles south and west of the Dogren Naval Facility. Here's a quick illustration of the team here that has been working on this project. You know, we have prioritized community outreach throughout the planning process, which we'll illustrate here tonight, ensuring that your concerns and the aspirations of this county are central to our approach. A few key points about Dogren West. We have designed this project with enhanced setbacks and significant open space, preserving the natural character of the site and maintaining sensitivity to existing environmental features. These measures are intended to minimize both visual impacts and protect the landscape that defines King George County. As part of that, we have engaged in a very comprehensive public engagement leading up to tonight. In April of two thousand twenty four, we had our first initial community town hall event where we had a multi-hour window for people to come in as time permitted for them, where we talked in general about what the project could be, heard feedback from them, so that we could then incorporate that feedback into our application. I think it's important to note that we believe in meeting with the community prior to filing our application. We wanted to hear from them, and quite frankly, they had some great ideas that we put into our application. We then filed the application and received great comments from staff. Thank you. We then took those comments, addressed them, and had a second town hall because we wanted to let the community know, hey, these are the changes we've made based on your comments and staff's comments. What else could we do to make this project better? And then in February, I virtually gave the presentation after the snowstorm, if you remember. Sorry I couldn't be here in person. And that brings us to tonight, where we are here before you. Thank you. So this slide shows a couple of the presentations we had. One at the Dogren Mary Washington University, well over a hundred people attended. That was the first one. And then over at the Smoot Library, we followed up. A couple of key points that were brought up or ideas that were brought up by the community were the addition of this community trail system, which we have agreed to proffer to and to maintain in perpetuity through an owner's association that will layer on and record against the property. So the county will not be at any expense. We will pay for the construction of it, and we will pay for the long-term maintenance of it. Fewer buildings, more open space, increased setbacks off Route three oh one were all things that were that were kind of brought up that we addressed in the application. Oh, and we have our website there, dogrenwest.com, where we continually post updates and receive feedback from the community and give them responses. We also post our applications up there, so everyone can have full access to what we're doing, trying to be transparent. So I'm going to go through some of the application details. The development plan, open space, setbacks, building height, the comprehensive plan, existing zoning and special exceptions. I know it's a lot, but we actually have simplified the applications from before. Today, the site is a mix of zonings. Our plan is to take this conglomerate of parcels and put it into a more cohesive project in one plan that can be developed as a data center campus. We're going to request that all of these now be rezoned to industrial. So here we have our development plan. You can see here, this is Route three oh one along the bottom of the plan. And the existing high transmission power lines run strategically along the frontage of the site. We have placed the substations adjacent to those, also because they're lower. And then they will feed the buildings that are adjacent to it, all of which we fund as the project developer. We have also, we implemented two hundred and fifty-foot setbacks that you can see right here. I think zoning code requires fifty feet, and we've proffered two hundred and fifty feet. And we're adding an additional hundred-foot landscape buffer all the way around the project. And for any, and so that, and we moved the buildings internal to the site, which is also something we received from the community, to help both with sound attenuation and the visual, try to minimize visual impacts to the community of the project. And then we strategically placed the stormwater management along the backside of the project to help protect any undue runoff due to the project's development. And we have our, my whole team here that's willing to dive into details around those matters. This slide here is meant, illustrates a couple of things. I think the most important being our commitment to forty percent open space on this project, well over two hundred acres. With, with, sorry, skipping here, with approximately at least a hundred acres along the backside between our project and the Machodik, trying to be sensitive to that as well as our neighbors behind us. Additionally, our two hundred, again, our two hundred and fifty-foot setback and then natural vegetation really helps to screen this project from the view shed. Here we have our transportation infrastructure updates. I have Carl with Grove Slade here to answer any detailed questions you may have around this. We have received approval, full approval from VDOT for our traffic study to allow for two access points at the site in the, in our left turn lane, D cell lane to come. They also asked us to look at doing some improvements a little further south on three oh one at Ridge Road, Route two oh five, which we are illustrating here, adding in a dedicated left so that people can more easily get onto three oh one, which we have proffered to do that work. We think will be very beneficial. This is something new and pretty exciting for us to share tonight. We heard the feedback from the community and from you all and other hearings as well as other meetings about what is this project going to look like from the road? How can we envision what it's going to be? So we went and found a unique consultant that specializes in dropping buildings into existing conditions so that you can see exactly what it will look like, the scale, the massing, and the related vegetation. So as you can see here, this is three oh one looking north. This is the view shed that we're looking at. This is the existing conditions today in the winter. We took pictures in winter and summer, so you could see both. We didn't want to just show you summer. So this ghost in the buildings that are on the development plan in the background. It's kind of hard to, obviously, it's not in the road. It's just there to show you where they are on the plan. If you look here in the right, in the winter, you can sort of make out this building here in the foreground. That is the building that is closest to the road that we saw on the plan there. That's winter. This is summer. We have virtually a hundred percent coverage in the summer. We're showing, and let me, also on the bottom here, you can see we're showing the, all buildings at seventy feet above finished floor with a fifteen-foot mechanical screen wall, just so we can be fully transparent as to exactly what you're going to see from the road. Moving up, moving up three oh one, again, looking northbound at the project. This is the existing condition here. We have this nice landscape berm that fronts most of the project here. It kind of falls down a little bit. So we wanted to take a picture from that point, just so you could see what that would look like. So here is the building. It's obviously, it's not, it's not this close. It's just to show you the scale of the building. It's two hundred and fifty feet setback. This again is showing a seventy-foot building, although we have put in our development plan that we will only do sixty-five feet within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. So this is actually five feet higher than what it'll be in reality. So this is winter. You get a little glimpse of the building there. Summer, we have, again, full coverage. Moving southbound, looking back the other way, again, you know, we have nice benefit of this existing foliage buffer that we have at the site, existing conditions. Again, this is looking back at that same building that we showed you earlier. It's the only building that's visible from Route three oh one in the wintertime. And this is in the summertime. So now I'm going to move on a little bit to the proffers and benefits of this project. You know, top line, you know, we're carving out other uses. It'll be specifically for data centers and ancillary benefits of substations. For the project, we're going to commit to forty percent open space. The community trail that'll run along the back of the project with views of the Machodik. Increased setbacks and sound mitigation measures that will be done in accordance with your code. We've also already commissioned a full sound study and have the results of that. And again, as we build the project, we will be required to do a sound study for each building before we start. And then when we finish, we'll have to then do a test and prove that we meet those standards. And we will commit to all those things. Proffer contributions. We are committing, we've changed a couple of things, timing being one. We're going to commit to give our cash proffers at the building permit, not at occupancy, so that you get the money sooner. I think that also is in response to some feedback we heard about the timeline that there is for fire trucks in this market. And so we wanted to make sure there was plenty of time in which to obtain a fire truck with the three million dollar public safety proffer that we're going to commit to. Additionally, if required, we would fund rental of a fire truck if, for some reason, we couldn't get one on time, and you are able to rent those. Parks and Rec, we're committing to a million dollars. Our public trail, you know, conservatively, we think it's five hundred thousand. We'll spend on that. And then we will, of course, commit to the ongoing maintenance. Something my partner and I are really committed to is workforce development. Five hundred thousand dollar commitment to that to be used as the board sees. But we've seen some great programs initiated around at community colleges and high schools that would train this local community so they can work at this project, whether that be construction or ongoing. You know, these facilities employ, there are a lot of MEP, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, to keep them running twenty-four hours a day. And then, and then we have this unique feature at the site. The VZ family, our landowner from a previous project, built a substantial water tower. I'm sure everyone's seen it out there on three oh one. We estimate the value of that to be about five to six million dollars. There's also a water line that's already in the ground that connects back to the water line system. It was actually turned on once on accident, so we know it works, but it hasn't been used. We did have a study done in our conversations with the service authority to confirm that it's in good working order and in good shape. And we will commit to doing another study right before we give it over to the service authority in good working order. We don't want to give them something that is not in good shape. We feel like this is a great improvement for the community. It's going to help with water pressure. And it's going to be an immediate impact. We're going to turn it on. It's already there. So that's, we're kind of lucky with, in that aspect. All right. Off-site improvements. We spoke a little bit about what happened there. We did our full, we have our full VDOT TIA approval done for this project. And we are committed to preparing an emergency action plan with the county, fire, and EMS as for construction and ongoing operations at the project. Okay, adherence to the comprehensive plan. This project is part of the Claydale Primary Settlement area. It was part of a larger piece of property that was developed as a residential community in the back and was meant to have commercial and industrial uses along the frontage of three oh one. That, with that language, we believe that this project is in conformance with that and are requesting that this project be considered substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. Special exceptions, you know, with the, as you all well know, with the new zoning ordinance, you know, we we are now required with any zoning application, even if the land is already industrial, to obtain a special exception. This is a standard, now, I believe, a smart and standard practice that's been adopted throughout Virginia so that you all have in the community has a chance to weigh in on a project such as this. We welcomed it, and as you can see, with our community outreach. The project's going to be in harmony with the district. These are some of the items that are, that you look at as you're evaluating, or this special exception is viable. We believe that it is. Secondly, here, we have a special exception for height. As you all know, you passed on to the board, and the board recently approved the ability for them to increase height above fifty feet via special exception. We're requesting to go to a maximum height of seventy feet. As you saw on those visuals, that will, that's, that will meet that standard. And then, you know, the, increase the maximum height of walls and fences. That's just to screen any of our outdoor equipment. This is our request for a second access point is something that we must request from you all. Because the property is located in the Highway Corridor Overlay District, we require Planning Commission approval for this. As you know, the project is five hundred acres. It's a very, very long distance along three oh one. So we believe it's in the best interest of this project at two access points, and VDOT has agreed with us and has approved that second access point. Fiscal impacts and highlights. Dogren West is expected to bring substantial economic benefits to the county. The project will generate new jobs and future reoccurring annualized tax revenues, providing long-term support for public services and local infrastructure. These are just a few of the key fiscal impacts that this project will provide for the county, which our team can expand upon if desired in the Q and A. We look forward to working collaboratively, collaboratively with this commission and the broader community and staff on this project to ensure that Dogren West becomes a responsible and valued addition to the King George County community. We thank you for your consideration and welcome questions. Thank you.
So Commissioners, I'm going to ask you to keep your burning questions. I'm going to allow public hearing session first. We get all that out the way, and then we can, we'll go into our discussion. But before I open the floor to, for a public hearing, I'm going to ask our attorney to address the constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at the agenda, I noticed in terms of procedure, we have three separate public hearings scheduled for this one, one particular project. And as the applicant just did, covered the aspects not only of rezoning, the comp plan amendment, but also the special exceptions. Those need to be three separate public comments, and the public should be encouraged to comment on all of those. Per the bylaws, public comments should be addressed to each one of those topics. So when we have the public hearing for rezoning, the chair should accept public comment as to rezoning issues. When we get to comp plan, comp plan issues for that specific parcel. And then when we get to the special exceptions, obviously, public comments should be encouraged by the chair for each of those things. But those things will be three separate hearings. And I would just encourage the chair to make sure that the public stays on topic for each of those in order to make their comments most impactful to the commission. Okay?
Very well, very well. So, so we all have received our instructions and recommendations. So I will ask each of you to adhere so you can make my job easier, and we can flow through this and get out of here before twelve o'clock midnight, sir. Thank you. All right. So, let's see. So public comment period will now be open for Resolution PC ten dash two five application Z dash two zero two four dash zero zero two two four. Dogren Innovation Hub rezoning application. All right, and I do have sign-in sheets. Make sure I have the right one. There we go. Okay, it looks like I only have two names on the sign-in sheet, and then I'll open it up for general. At that, after that. So the first name is Jeffrey Robin. Did I say that correctly, sir? Raven, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so name's Jeff Raven. I live in Hopyard Farms off Parsons Lane. I'm here to speak in support of this motion. So the center will only be utilizing sixty percent of the property. It's giving very generous setbacks away from the road to keep visuals of our rural community in mind. Part of the property will be opened up to the public in the form of a public trail system, giving access to a piece of land that otherwise no, no members of this community, other than the specific landowners, would be able to access legally. So I'm sure some people here are worried about sound. My mother is an audiologist. I've been, had sound and, you know, loudness kind of taught to me, and that's been something I've been concerned about my whole life. The numbers that they are quoting in the proffers, max daytime being sixty decibels and nighttime of fifty-five decibels. With me, my volume is approximately sixty-five decibels, so very reasonable. Let's see, what else? The ones fully realize the annual tax income from the, from the project is almost doubling our current tax revenue for the county for the entire year and every year going forward. So I don't know exactly what we will be spending that money on. In theory, it could be used to reduce the burden on the homeowners and residents in the county, reducing our tax, our taxes every year, also funding things like schools and the fire department. I am a former volunteer fire department, or firefighter, sorry. Grew up doing that in Charlottesville and now currently still do it part-time in Ebony, Virginia. I've seen differences in a well-funded and a massively underfunded department. We seem to be more on that well-funded side, but that additional tax revenue could go towards these good things like the new ladder truck. And that equipment can and will make the difference in saving lives potentially. Also, would love to see the potential for some of that money to go to paying down our water debt and sewer debt because I am, I live in Hopyard Farms. I'm connected to the grid. My every-two-month water bill is in excess of three hundred dollars. I don't even hit the minimum cap, so it's pretty substantial. I only wish I could be on well and septic, but not, not an option, unfortunately. Yeah, again, as. Yeah, again, as the stage of life I'm going into, looking into having children here soon, I would also love to see some of that tax money being go into the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Shaw.
Which of the three aspects is this one?
This is the rezoning, sir.
Rezoning, that's all the little parcels stuff, not, not the add-on? Oh, okay.
Yes.
James Shaw, James Monroe District, speaking in my capacity as EDA member, King George taxpayer, and I live in Claydale, so I have skin in the game here. And so, as a member of the EDA and we're looking for these kind of projects and, you know, like I said before earlier in the evening, that this, this fits it. I've been talking to these guys, I saw them at Mary Washington at their meet and greet and such and posed some interesting questions to them and they took some of those things into consideration and I've seen this project grow and good things. I recommend it and, you know, the, the mention earlier here regarding the sound, that's always gonna be probably the biggest thing, but the nice thing is that they have this, you know, they've been pushing it further and further away from the edges. And that water tower thing, that was a new one, I gotta talk to you guys about that. I got some other ideas, but not gonna make it public though, see, that, that, I know that FOIA stuff. So, and, yeah. This sets us up good for the future. We got, we will in the end, in this county, have three data center sites, this being one of them and, didn't know the money was that big, but we aren't going to spend, to count our chickens before we hatch. That's an important thing for everybody to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there anyone in the room who wish to speak on the rezoning application?
Thank you.
This man.
Good evening. My name is Renee Parker. I live at 7144 Pepper Mill Road in Claydale. I've been in King George 31 years, never addressed your board, which is crazy when I think about how many times I've, I've spoken to the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, I came because every time I hear about a project that comes our way, Amazon, Solar Farm, whatever it is, I get real excited. Because I've been here long enough to see the need, to see the need for revenue. We don't have it. We don't have it, we're out of it. I, I'm with everybody else, I don't wanna see my taxes go up, no one wants to see their taxes go up, but until money falls out of the sky dedicated to King George only, because King George citizens don't want their taxes to go up, we have to have revenue. This particular project, you, I mean, I'm not gonna quote all the things that he said, the revenue alone, given the proffers that they put in place, given the spacing that they've included, given some of the things that everybody in their game has probably learned from the things that happened with Amazon, needing to control the decibel level, needing to control the height, needing to control the visuals, all those things are covered. As a person who lives in Claydale since 2012, we knew when we purchased there, because the late Ed Veezy told us so, that that entire area was meant for this very thing. And talked about how it was imminent, you know, and, and it's taken a minute, but it's here. So I urge you to, obviously I'm in favor of it, I urge you to consider it favorably for the Board of Supervisors and help us reach some of our revenue needs, because I think this is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone in the room? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Kevin Beyond, the 9906 Mohawk Drive. I'm in the James Monroe District and Renee sorta stole my thunder. I've been in the county for about 30 years, I've raised three children, they went through the King George School Systems, they all turned out successful, self-sufficient, good jobs. And yes, we need tax revenue in King George, we need industry, we need something. There's always gonna be people, people that say, no, we don't want this, we don't want that. It's all, just like for the Solar Farm, for Dogren West, what have you, we need tax revenue. I'm pro education, I'm pro schools, I'm pro fire and rescue, I want our Sheriff's Department, I want everything to be well-funded, I wanna have the best teachers. I see teachers leaving left and right from the county. I want this county to be the best it can be for our future generation of children that come out of it. People complain that they don't want their property taxes to be raised, people complain they don't want any industry, they just want everything rural. Well, it's not 1955 anymore, it's 2025 and we definitely need some industry in King George to bring in more tax revenue to keep our county great. So, that's where I stand and I hope this project gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others in the room?
Hello, board. My name's Billy Cleft, King George resident, 13188 Salem Church Road, King George, Virginia. I'm not a big component of growth. And there's a double-edged sword here when it comes to people coming to the county, having the lowest tax revenue, that's why they're targeting this county. But when a company comes and presents something like they did today, this is a much more of a, a win-win for the county. When you're talking 100 and 120 million dollars a year potentially coming into our revenue stream to be used for whatever, that's a big deal. So that was my statement for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others in the room? Mr. Chris, are there any online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Very well, sir. Seeing that there are none online and there are no others in the room, public comment on Application Z-2024-00224 is now closed. I will now open the floor for the Planning Commission for their questions and comments. Yes, sir, Mr. Fox. Mr. Muck, whichever one, doesn't matter.
So, I am hardwired to dislike projects like these. And in fact, I, when I first heard about it, wanted to, I mean, I, I'm in the Dogren County, I live on the Machado Creek, which they would have but. I drive down Washington Mill constantly, which they would cross from. In my mind, I wanted to oppose this project. Then you start to dive into it and try as I might, there's no holes in my opinion to poke in this, right? There, there's an insane amount to, to embrace for the future of the county, right? Number one, you're never gonna see this in winter, sure, whatever, but it's 301, right? 40% of the land they're committing at least to keep undisturbed. Truthfully, one of the things I like the most about it, they don't even, they don't even need a traffic light across from Washington Mill, right? That tells you all you need to know about the disruption that this is gonna cause to the county. And that's incredibly favorable compared to some other projects we've reviewed here. Something that we haven't talked about is they're actually part of the Northern Net Cooperative, which if you dive into it and research it, which Nick reminded me of the other day, means they pay for the infrastructure upgrades to the grid, right? If you're on the Dominion side, you don't. That bill is footed by us to the tune of roughly 55% goes to residential customers. That's not the case here, right? So it's a net positive in that regard as well. Almost half of this is already industrial, right? Part we're talking about now, is it really suitable for anything else? No, right? You can't really put a farm in there, you don't wanna see that be residential, wouldn't it be appropriate for the area? And truthfully, I don't think any of us wanna see that area become commercial because of the congestion it would cause on 301. I'll tell you, the thing that really speaks to me also the most about these guys is I think they're the type of individuals we wanna do business with here, right? They've gone as far as to rent office space and be open to meet with citizens of this county at any point during their, I'm presuming, very busy days. And that's not something we can say for many applicants in my, it's only been a year, but my tenure on this commission. So I applaud them, I applaud the project, I'm not even gonna talk about the money, I think that speaks for itself. Frankly, I don't have an adjective that is expressive enough to, to say what that could do for the resources here. And their, their proffers are absolutely amazing, so I, I would love to see this be a unanimous positive recommendation to the board.
Thank you, sir. With, with his comments, I'd like to hear if there are any opposing comments. Mr. Kendrick.
So, I'm a little, I'm a little confused. Kelly, you, in your presentation, made a comment that this area's been designated for industrial development by the Board of Supervisors? Is that the way you put it? When did they do that?
I'm gonna ask Matt if he's got the details on that, but I know that the board's... Okay. Okay. Okay.
They, they overlaid several locations within the county as a technology zone, technology, Birchwood was one of them. It enables you to go and request in additional incentives for your project if you're gonna be developing there. We are not requesting additional incentives. So, that's what that was, the way I understand it.
I'm just looking at the comprehensive plan and I'm trying to, trying to put all this together in my mind, but the comprehensive plan talks about it as commercial and residential development. Now, that site that they're on, I haven't looked at it that closely, but I know it's not a great site for thinking about housing or anything. And, and I'm not, certainly not in favor of doing a bunch of, you know, strip malls or down 301, but a lot of traffic on that road, it's only gonna get more. It, and it's right near, it, it's right on the approach to the base. Has, has anybody reached out to the base to get their opinion of this? I'm also, one thing that's been going through my mind lately is, the base was a big driver in getting the upgrades to the electrical system in that area back several years ago, to the point where they actually put a substation on government property because they were the largest user on that line and, you know, and, and they were at the very tail end of it. So Dominion heard all those complaints and, and dead stuff. Now, I'm, I'm looking at just all kinds of draw on that. So I'd be curious to know if the base has any concern about adequate power being drained away from them on this. And, and I haven't heard any conversation about Dominion's plans to do development. I would hate to be Dominion right now, looking at getting enough power to support the three data centers that have come before us so far. So, is it really feasible from that point of view? And I guess I just don't like the site. It's got nothing to do with the physical aspects of the site, but it's, it's on the approach to the base. I don't think they're gonna care for that a whole lot, there's enough congestion there now anyway. It just to me doesn't seem like a good aerial, area to be rezoning as industrial, even though it's sort of a clean industrial. And I, I appreciate that they're talking about moving the buildings away from the, the edge of the road, you know, the 250-foot setback, I'd like more. I'd like to see something that guaranteed that they weren't that visible, but it just seems like a bad area to be designating as industrial, so.
Half of it already is, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, half of it is buy right industrial already, not even commercial.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Sean, you got a floor?
I'd just like to say that in the past, before Mr. Veezy, he's certainly very visionary, he's a, he's a dynamo, God bless him. That property was ready to go for a subdivision. Mrs. Gray sold that to, back then it was Somerset Homes and I think, I don't know if it was 90 or 180 homes were, were planned on going there that way.
Absolutely, sir, yes.
Yeah, I still got the plans in my office. So, anyway, I, I completely support the rezoning of this, this takes some pressure off our schools. There's not gonna be any school seats required by this and the proffers are amazing and I think, I think we should definitely rezone this property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nicely?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, right now, for this public comment and our discussions at this point, we're only discussing whether or not this rezoning should occur.
Correct.
Correct, not the overall project.
Correct.
I have no concerns about the rezoning, this to industrial, it seems to match with the rest of the property that's around it. I have concerns about the project, I'll hold those for later.
Very well, thank you. All right. Are there any, any other comments about the rezoning at this point from the commission? Okay? All right, if not, I am going to close the board's comment session. And I am open for, if, if you, any action that you wanna take.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you just use the words for me, you're gonna close public hearing?
Did I not?
Close.
I thought I closed the public hearing first, then opened up for the board, now I'm closing the board. But our close, public hearing is now closed for, and as a matter of fact, Application Z-2024-0024. Yeah, okay. Is that good?
Thank you.
Right. So, we're now, if, if, if everyone is content with their, their comments or their, their questions, I'm open for any, any motions at this time.
I'd like to recommend that we not make any motions until we go forward with the special exception.
Okay.
Yeah, I would second that. I think we should take this as an entire package and, and discuss the entire package and not take a look at just one, one bite at a time.
Right. Sounds good. So no motion will be made, no action at this time. Okay.
Now we vote.
Yeah, to vote and not take action? Yeah, right.
Mr. Chair, because these are three separate, my understanding of the bylaws is that you would need to, if you wanted to defer action to later in, later in the meeting, you are, you are allowed to do that per your bylaws, but you'll need a motion to do that in a second. It would be, it would be difficult, at least from my understanding of it and from staff mentioning here, to make any sort of motions or decisions on the special exception without having first addressed the rezoning.
Yeah, all right. So, if I can get a motion?
I make a motion that we defer action on the rezoning until after we've heard a public hearing on the special exception.
Second?
Motion's been made in second. If we have a roll call?
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Um, Mr.
Right, okay. Okay. A motion to defer action till after the special exception discussion. Mr. DeCorda?
Aye.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Maffett?
Aye.
Flatley?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
And Mr. Williams?
Aye.
All right, motion carries for to be, to be deferred. Next, we'll open public hearings for Resolution PC-11-25, Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Add Parcel 17-24 to the Claydale Primary Settlement Area. Add Parcel 17-24 to the Claydale Primary Settlement Area. Okay. All right. So let's take a look here.
I don't have any further presentation. I don't...
Very well, thank you.
...applicant does.
So next on this agenda item, I have Renee Parker to speak on this.
Sounds a little unclear on the directions about whether I need to say something three times to make it count.
No.
Okay. Making sure I understand everything.
Correct.
I do want to point out, though, reiterate something that the gentleman here said, that they're not asking for any incentives. What a refreshing thing to hear. No incentives, no tax abatements. I mean, you almost can't believe it, but it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
James Shaw, James Monroe District, speaking in my capacity as an EDA member and King George taxpayer and Claydale resident. Got on the GIS this afternoon, took a look at the aerial photo of this area, and I see all this green, and then there's this jagged yellow line, and then the green continues. This is a no-brainer. Vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others? All right. Mr. Chris, is there any, is there anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very well, thank you. Seeing that there is no one in the room and no one online, public comment on application Z-2024-00225 is now closed. The floor is now open to the Planning Commission for any comments or questions on that particular amendment to parcel 17-24. Any comments? No. All right. So comment from the commission board is now closed. Just like the previous resolution, I need a motion to defer.
Motion to defer the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Add Parcel 1724 to the Claydale Primary Settlement Area until after the special exception.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Duke, if we can have a roll call?
Motion for deferral. Mr. Fox? Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Decorda?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Maffet?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
Ms. Flatley?
Aye.
And Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right. Thank you so much, ma'am. Put this away. All right. Next is a public hearing for Resolution PC-12-25, Application Z-2024-00225, Dahlgren Innovation Hub Special Exception Application. So the floor, I don't have... One, two, three, yeah. So I don't have a sign-in form for that one. Was there one? Mr. Shaw, I'm sure you signed up correct.
Wasn't there?
Very well. Okay. All right. Let's tell you, I think you want to, well, it's open for public comment, then we'll come back. Let's see. Yeah. So I'm just going to open, I'll open the floor. Mr. Shaw, come on up.
James Shaw, James Monroe District, speaking in my capacity, ZDA member, King George taxpayer, live in Claydale. You've heard my comments earlier, so I won't repeat. Vote yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Parker, you've spoken, are you, would you like?
That's all it is. Please, 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 vote yes to the supervisors.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Are there any others in the room? All right. Mr. Chris, is there anyone online at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Thank you. All right. So the public comment for period for application Z-2024-0025, the Dahlgren Innovation Hub Special Exception Application is now closed. I will now open the floor for the Planning Commission itself for any comments. You have the floor.
Is this to change the building height to 70 feet?
This is the whole exception.
Okay.
It's one of them, yes.
It is? So since Chief Moody is here, and we asked about the fire protection for the taller buildings, could you speak to that?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address that. The 75 feet's not going to be an issue with the Fire and Rescue Department. So, yeah. And the, it was, the applicant has been very cooperative as we, you know, raise concerns or issues. They have addressed each one of those, so the proffer for the ladder truck is certainly going to help with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, sir. Mr. Nicely, you have the floor?
Yeah, I have a number of questions and concerns about the overall project. Number one on my list, if y'all have been listening for the past several meetings as we've been talking about data centers, is water usage. I heard nothing in your presentation about what your plans are to handle the cooling. I noticed in the documentation, you talked about how you would pay for infrastructure improvements. I would like to hear something from the service authority. I know where the public water is, where that plant is in Dahlgren. I have no estimation from you about how many gallons per day this data center, because I think you say you're going to connect to the public service and public water. So how many gallons are we going to, are we able to expand that Dahlgren plant? Who's going to pay for expanding that Dahlgren plant? How long is that going to take to get approved? Water is my number one concern with data centers. Number two concern, we pulled another data center applicant through us, through a lot of discussion about generators and diesel fumes and all of that that's going on. We were concerned about it in a very industrial part of the county, where they already have a lot of smell and a lot of public concern from the dump. There's a very large residential area right behind them. Does nobody in that residential area care about the diesel fumes and it's going to come from the generators associated with this power plant? Number three is I'm a little confused about the traffic estimate. We heard from another data center that had a similar square footage, that they're likely to need to have a traffic light on Route 3 at their entrance. Yet somehow miraculously, we don't think this data center is going to require a stoplight at the entrance there at Washington Mills Road. And I guess I will go on to say that I certainly understand the residents' concerns with revenue, and they see the dollar signs that potentially come from a large data center like this. It does not impact the school system. It doesn't impact the police. They're offering very good proffers to account for the fire department, so I don't see that as a big infrastructure. But I caution people that when you start waving dollar signs in front of people, they get very excited, and they tend to not think about the downsides of this. I'm concerned about the water, very concerned, and we've had no discussion about it.
I'm happy to address that, if appropriate at this time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the comments, Commissioner. We have committed with the, we're working with county administrator, with the service authority on an MOU for the project regarding water. We do intend to connect to the public water for potable uses, for flushing toilets, for just our everyday use. We do not intend to take any more water than is needed. With regards to cooling, we have, are working with the county and the service authority with the potential to build, if we were to do any cooling, water cooling, we could build a, our own line at our cost, back to the water treatment plant for reclaimed water. But it's our intention to have air-cooled data centers. And if you see any of the new projects that are coming out of the ground here in the last year, almost everyone is moving to the air-cooled space. So we can't take more water than you have, sir, and we are, we will, we commit, we're committed to that.
Yeah, that's really my concern, is I'd like to hear from the service authority about whether, about what infrastructure you're proffering to pay for the pipe.
The pipe is...
Who's going to pay for generating the water that goes into the pipe and filtering and processing the water that goes into and comes back out of that pipe? So I heard from Board Supervisor before about how many, Board Supervisor Bender, about how many times the water for a data center has to be processed. It's more than just a pipe. And until we get something back from the service authority that they, that we've got a comprehensive plan that can stitch all this together, or you specifically proffer that you're not going to use water cooling, I've got a real concern with voting one way or the other on this until we get a more complete plan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sorry. I'm taking a question here. Yes, we have committed to the water authority that we're only going to be taking enough water to satisfy our potable needs.
That's not the way I read your proffer statements.
Okay. We are, we are committing to that. Want to add to that, or?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Anne Neil Cosby, and I'm Land Use Counsel for Dahlgren West. And because the zoning ordinance, when it was amended, and specifically includes for data centers, the prohibition that they may not use county water for anything other than domestic usage, there doesn't need to be a proffer, because we're not allowed to do that under the ordinance. And there's been a zoning determination that was issued by the zoning administrator to that effect, setting forth what's allowed in the county ordinance and what's not allowed. So we are not allowed to use county water for anything other than domestic usage, and I'm looking at Mr. Vaughn here, you know, which is, you know, your basic, you know, drinking water, health, safety, toilet flushing. So under your ordinance, we cannot use anything, any county water for anything other than domestic. So that's why it's not proffered. And it does say in the proffers, you know, that we will have a connection, you know, pursuant to what's permitted by law. So we are only permitted to do that. So that's, that's the answer there.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get down to the right page to...
Yes, of course.
The computer here is reacting well.
Yes, sir.
It's getting late on the computer, too.
Of course.
Mr. Nicely, you have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Flatley, you have the floor?
So to follow on that, I've been learning more and more about these cooling systems, and so for clarification, using humidity, water for humidity in the building?
No, it's using, they flow air through, and quite frankly, they're changing, technology is changing literally every month in this space, getting more and more efficient, and we're seeing these buildings become more efficient.
So there's no water used for humidity?
No.
Okay. And there's, is there a glycol closed-loop system, anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't, every system is unique in system, but there are glycol systems. There are many different types of cooling systems. We, you know, what we're doing is committing that we're not going to use water for cooling.
So...
So that would, that kind of...
But what I want to know, because...
Sure.
There could be some misunderstandings about what that looks like. And as I've educated myself, I just want some clarification. These glycol systems are two-thirds water, and that water needs to be, I guess, filled the first time and then flushed and replaced periodically. And so when you say we're not going to use water, I want absolute clarification that you're not going to use water. And if you are going to use water, how much, how often, what are the limitations? And then I, for the life of me, tried to ask several times for people to project if we have a large consumer of water in our county or multiple large consumers of water, does that limit our further development in other places? Which is not an answer that you need, you know, to give me, but it's a concern.
Okay. Well, we, our conversations with the service authority are, they gave us a level of water that they considered they could, they could provide to us per building, and that is pretty consistent with what you see of an office building. And that's what we're committing to taking as needed, one building at a time. And we're also committing to putting in additional infrastructure if additional water is needed, and we request it at our cost.
So can you tell me how much water they...
Yeah, typically like five, depending on the size of the building, they vary, 5,000 to 10,000 gallons per day. Sorry. Sorry.
And none of that is used for anything other than flushing toilets? That seems like a lot of water.
In, you know, washing hoses, hose bibs and such things. Yes, ma'am.
All right. She's here to the floor. Mr. Fox, you have the floor?
Yeah, a couple, just picking up on that. So just to be clear, are you essentially saying that you won't be using any water for the cooling application at the project?
Yeah, we won't be using county water for any of the cooling.
Okay. For cooling, specifically.
Any water, any water, not just county water.
Well, if we have to...
Any water. Are you going to use a well? Are you going to...
Oh, no, no, we're not, we're not, we're not drilling any wells.
Sorry to jump on you.
So...
Is it correct?
No, I mean, if, oh, I mean, if we were to maybe one day truck in some water to do something or to fill it up initially, if that's required, but we are not intending to use county water for anything related to cooling.
Maybe staff can confirm this, but I believe I heard that there is Virginia law now that you can't use wells for data center cooling water.
Correct.
Is that, is that accurate?
We are not intending to drill wells.
I heard somewhere that it's actually prohibited now.
I believe it's in your...
If I'm not mistaken.
In the zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance.
Okay. So, okay, so that clears up the well issue and the service authority issue. So essentially, we come back to just clarification that for the cooling application, no water is going to be used. Is that accurate?
Correct. We are utilizing air cooling.
Okay. Now, I'd just like to turn then, if I could, to the issue of the standby power generation. Okay?
Yes.
Because last time we talked about this, I think it was two, three meetings ago or something like that, you had indicated that your assumption was diesel-fired engines there totaling up approximately over 1,000 megawatts of standby capacity. Is that still your base case assumption for this?
At the full load, at full build-out, that's where, that's where we could potentially get to, if we...
Okay. And do you have any particulate matter emission study on what that full-load runtime would look like?
I can bring up my team to talk about that.
Because I think it would be helpful to not only see that, but also any prevailing wind data you have, because obviously that emission is going to go somewhere. And if the prevailing wind is Claydale, then I think the people there would probably need to know that.
Yes, and one of the things that differentiates this project is the fact of how we, the space that we have and the open space that we're providing, in part, is to allow for proper separation between the buildings, for, to allow for this type of...
I mean, they do these studies based on concentric amounts of particulate over, you know, whatever, however many thousand yards or whatever it gets to, right?
Correct.
Do you have something along those lines that...
We have not, we have not commissioned a study at this point to do that, but we are, we are committed to following all DEQ. DEQ regulates that very specifically. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to bring up a gentleman on my team to address that a little.
Well, that would be great, but I think in addition to whatever they may present, I mean, if, whatever you couldn't actually submit for the record on that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay. I'm speaking particularly about particulate matter emissions from all those gensets at some given, at different runtimes, you know, one hour, five hours, 10, whatever it may be, on concentric... it may be, on concentric spacing, right?
We could provide that.
Right, along with the prevailing wind, because it's got to go somewhere.
Okay.
I'll be happy to listen to your colleague there if he wants to say anything about that. I mean, there's no chimneys up.
Good evening, my name is Bill Jonda, I'm a civil engineer with Gordon, working on this project. Obviously, we don't have any site-specific studies, but I don't know if you.
Is that obvious? I didn't know that was obvious.
I don't know if you had a chance to review the J-Lark study that came out earlier this year, actually came out at the end of last year. That was a nonpartisan commission that was put together to evaluate data centers in the state of Virginia. They did a full evaluation of all existing data centers across the entire state, and they, they found that over the last several years, data centers are using only 7% of their air quality permits for the diesel generators. Basically, that's turning them on for 20 to 30 minutes per month just for testing. They found that, on average, generators ran for one to two hours outside of testing during an entire year for, for baseload operations.
Is it correct that they're allowed up to 500 hours per year?
They are allowed to run at whatever their permit allows them to, to, if the power goes out.
500 hours a year, which is about three weeks. Please continue.
So I think that, I'm trying to see if there's anything else we have on that. I think that it's just important to note that DEQ has a lot of regulations on not only the air quality permits, but the type of generators that can be used on a site, and that the technology continues to evolve, whether it's tier-two, tier-four generators, whatever it is, and that whatever is required at the time of the air quality permit is what the operator has to use.
I understand the permit, and I thank you for that. I think it's just, in terms of reference, the largest diesel standby setup that I'm aware of, I think is in Loudoun County, and it's about 250 megawatts. So we're talking about something potentially four times that size. The largest in the United States that I'm aware of is about 570 megawatts in Texas. So we'd be, you know, we're talking about the largest diesel-fired engine setup in the United States, right here on Route 301, which is okay, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that's a deal killer for me, but I think it's important to have information at hand to make educated decisions. So that particular matter emission study of what it would be like to run at 1,000 megawatts for one hour, 10 hour, whatever it is, and your concentric air quality, given the prevailing winds that we have in the area, and that'd be really helpful to, for the, for us and for the Board of Supervisors and for staff to have. That's all I'll say on this. Other than that, I'll, just as a general remark, I, I do like the way you've developed the project, it checks a lot of boxes. I would commend you on, on that in, in general terms, thank you.
Mr. Fox, you have the floor? Have you, you have the floor, sir? Are you, you're done, thank you. So my question to that, to follow up with that is, how often would that be used?
Yeah, they're typically, as Bill mentioned, run for five to 20 minutes per month, and when they phase them in, they stagger them in, they don't do them all at one time, which is required by DEQ. There's very specific standards that we can provide to the commission that DEQ uses to regulate these things. And that's also why we've kind of, if we looked at the development plan, you could see that we have, you know, 1,000 feet of separation between several of the buildings. So when you think about Loudoun County, because you're thinking about one building here, one building, if you look at the whole data center alley, that's, which far exceeds this project, and there's much, much more gener, backup generation in that location. It's, we're just doing this in a smart collective format, as opposed to sprawling data centers that, that was done in other jurisdictions here. You guys have done, have been smart in identifying a few key locations where we can cluster these things in a, in a smart, efficient manner. Thank you.
All right, is anyone else seeking a place? Yes, sir, you have the floor?
Just to follow up on the water, maybe Matt knows the answer. The service authority is not on this property, is that correct? There's no public water there? I don't know who would know.
We are connected, there is a, there's a line that is built in the ground from the water tower, back behind the project that connects to the, to the public system, it's just not turned on right now.
Back to Claydale?
Yes, so it's not turned on.
And is, is that sewer as well?
There's, so the water that is minor, I'm not speaking on behalf of the service authority, separate entity from the county, but it is my understanding that, yes, the, the information that was provided about connecting to Claydale is accurate. And then the other question was, is there sewer on the property right now? No, there's not. I believe sewer, I want to say it's up near the, where the new fire station is being built. I believe that's the terminus of the, of the public sewer lines.
So it is, how will that get there? You'll have to run that, and that will be at your cost, not to county? Okay, that sounds like a good deal to me. That doesn't surprise me. I yield back.
Thank you. Are there any others? Mr. Nicely, you have the floor?
Yeah, if I could just go back to one, could you please pull up your site map again with the depiction of where your buildings are?
Somebody, sir.
Go back to their presentation.
A question will be much easier with the visual here. Keep going back to the site map, please. A question is related to your stormwater management plan. If you please go back, keep going back. Yeah, right there, either one of those was fine.
Right there, it's perfect.
Yeah, I'm curious that you have a stormwater pond next to all of the buildings, but one, but one, and you have two associated with the building on, on the left-hand side. Why is there not a stormwater management plan? I can't see the building number, but it's pretty apparent to me, the building that doesn't have a blue blob next to it. Yes, sir. Where's that stormwater management?
Sure, I'm happy to address this one as well. So the ponds you see there are conceptual locations. In this instance, we feel that that building may require an underground detention facility instead of an above-ground pond, just because of space constraints. We didn't want to push too close to the Machota Creek. It's our goal to be, have an additional setback beyond the RPA that's already established there. We wanted that vegetated buffer to provide like a second row of protection of runoff into the creek, and just feel like maybe there wasn't enough room for a pond there, but that'll be determined during final engineering as to whether a pond is feasible there. But we are trying to maximize the use of wet ponds, because they are your best practice.
Okay, thank you. So you, you believe that one may end up going underground, under the parking or under the building itself?
It would be under the, under the parking, under the drive aisle, adjacent to the building.
All right. My second question is really not associated with, with your permit so much, but is I've been doing research about data centers. There seems to be a growing concern about e-waste. Can you talk to us, any of you figured out a plan? You look at the obsolescence of the servers and how many thousand server ports you're going to have in this data center, and with a two-to-three-year obsolescence, how many, how many tons of, of caustic boards are we going to be dumping into the local landfill from the data center?
Finally get a chance to talk, thank you. There is an entire cottage industry involved in recycling e-waste, and you are correct, the typical turnover time or what we call refresh of the data center equipment, which is the silicone chips, the servers, in some cases, the racks, every three to five years. That material, that equipment is taken out, recycled, and in many cases refurbished and resold. So in terms of, if the question is, will the equipment come out once it needs to be refreshed and go to the landfill, I would say that the chances of that happening are very limited, because even though that may not be the most up-to-date chip and compute that goes in, it is still incredibly valuable, and there are entire companies that come in, get that, get that equipment, take it out, refurbish, refresh, and then resell it to another data center user.
Thank you very much. My, my last comment here, is the county seeing the VDOT traffic assessment? I'm also, I'm still very concerned that we, that we believe a similar-sized data center is going to require a traffic light, but this one doesn't.
Yes, I, I can take that one. Carl Holtgren with Grove Slade, we're the traffic engineer on the project, and VDOT had the same question when we did the traffic study. They required us to look at traffic signal warrants at both proposed driveways, and we ran that analysis and found that the, the projected volumes just are not, they're not there, not even close to meeting warrants. Route 301 is obviously a busy road, but we're projecting that most of the outbound traffic is going to turn right out of the site to go south, and you really need the left-turn traffic to warrant the signals. So in this case, it's, it's really not close. We did look at that, it's in the traffic study, and VDOT agreed.
So what makes you believe that the traffic is going to be predominantly going south? What is it about southbound?
Just looking at where we expect the employees to, to live, just looking at the, you know, zooming out a little bit and seeing the population centers. We, we talked about that with the county and VDOT, that's something we talk about before we even start the study, is what percent of the trips go this way, that way, north, southeast, west.
Okay, just so geographically, your second entry site down there, the, the second one is off to the right of that, that's your primary one there at Washington Mill, right? The second entrance.
Yep, to the.
Am I turned around?
Yeah.
The, the Washington Mill is there on the left-hand side of this diagram, right? Right there?
That's correct.
Right?
Yeah, this is Washington.
And where is your second entrance?
It's right here, at the northern end of the property. There's, there's a median break here on 301, we'd be connecting to that.
Oh, I don't believe so, because the water tower is right there opposite Washington Mill.
This is Washington Mill, right?
Disagree. The water tower is.
Right, so this, this exhibit shows what we're calling the west, the west campus driveway. Yeah. See, the, the north arrow is here, so we're at the southern, southern, western property line, this will be the primary access point, this is Washington Mill Road right here, existing median break, so we're tied.
Right.
Right.
And your second one is to the north of that?
That's correct.
At the next crossover?
Yeah, there, there might be a crossover in between, I can't remember, but we are lining up this driveway with an existing crossover.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Nicely, you, you have the floor, thank you so much. I think Mr. Nicely has touched every aspect of your team.
He was very nice about it, though, thank you.
If there are no other burning comments or questions, I am going to close the commissioner's comment session at this time. So, Mr. Applicant, is there anything that you want to say before we decide on any action at this, at this time?
No, I would just like to thank the commission for, for your thoughtful questions and comments, and especially the community, everyone that's come out to our hearings, taken time out of their day to come and, and talk to us, we really appreciate it, and you've made our project a better project, and it's gotten us to where we are today, and we're grateful for that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we need an action, I think, can we take an action collectively?
Mr. Chair, if you could, if you could close that last, that third public.
Well, did I not? Did I not? All right, so, did I not? Goodness gracious. All right, the public hearing session for the application Z-2024-0025 is now closed. So under advisory or with question, can we take, do, can we take an action?
Yes, you are now, you are now on your third public hearing for this particular project that was related to the three special exceptions that were listed. You have deferred action on the other two. You may take them up, I believe you could probably take them up in any order that you would like. I think it would be cleanest if you would to address the special exceptions, but I believe you need to take up the zoning first.
Suggestions, commission? I'd say would I? Correct, yeah. Yes.
Well.
Sure, go ahead.
I was wondering if we were waiting, or would want to wait for some information that was addressed tonight, or taking any action?
Yeah, I would prefer to defer this to next month.
Well, Sean, you're, you're absolutely welcome to make the motion if it's second, and we'll take the vote. If not, then someone will defer it, but.
I would just want to make sure that Mr. Fox had some questions about the particulate matter, Mr. Nicely had some questions about water usage, so it would be my recommendation to get the answers to those questions before we take a vote on this.
I would second that motion.
So are you making a motion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that motion?
I make a motion that we defer decision on this until after some of the questions that we've asked tonight are clarified pertaining to the air quality particulate matter that Mr. Fox was addressing, and the water issues that Mr. Nicely was addressing.
Second, that motion.
Motion's been made, and second, Ms. LaDuke, if you could do a roll call?
Motion to defer action on all items till the next meeting?
Should we clarify for them what we actually want?
She wants to defer all?
All items.
All items.
They're all a group.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, point of order, you would have, you would have to do each of those three separately. You have to do each of those three separately, I don't make the rules, sorry. You have to do each of those three separately, and your bylaws require that you specify a date and time. If you're deferring and not taking action after a public hearing, the bylaws contemplate you taking action. If you don't take action, then you have to specify the time, place, and date that you will take action on it, and it will need to be for each of those three public hearings.
So should we have, somebody just said discussion, after somebody makes a motion?
No, you have a discussion before, before the motion, but that's what we, that's what we just, in my opinion, we just had.
I'm going to start by withdrawing my motion, because it was not the appropriate motion.
All right. So, Sean, you, you have the floor? But that's okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, and if it doesn't carry, then we can consider a different motion, but my motion would be that we approve Resolution PC 1025 and Resolution PC 1125 and PC 1225 as presented. You will have to do those separately. Okay. So let's, let's start with the first one, and we'll see if you get a second. But we wouldn't, I don't think we'd want to approve one without the other, so. You, you have to.
All right, let's, let's try that.
I would start with, start with the zoning and see if you get a second, and we'll go.
Okay.
I have a question, though, if, if you propose those and we say no, we don't get to come back and talk about it.
But then you can make a motion to defer.
Do we? Once it's been voted yes or no, do we get to then defer?
No.
No.
It's voted down, it's voted down.
So I'll ask, I'll ask the applicant if they're ready for us to vote on this tonight.
Of course he is. Of course, yes. You, yes, you do have the option to defer, should you.
Can I consult with my, with my team here? Uh, sorry, I was not expecting, uh, this scenario. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chair, there may be some confusion, uh, in, in a comment that you had made that, that discussion would happen before the motion. I, I think you were referring to the discussion about each particular item that you all would have collectively as a group. Pursuant to Robert's rules, if you make a motion and that motion is then seconded, you then open it up to the commission and say, does anyone have any discussion as to that motion? And you certainly can at that point.
Yeah, so the question could be, is there any unrest, right, at that, at that time?
Can I, can I step in? Can I step in?
Yes, sir.
Because I, I want, you know, we have, we have, we have said that we want to be transparent, collaborative with this community. We want to address your concerns and we've been working on this project for quite some time. And we are certainly willing to wait one more month or, or as needed to address those concerns and I don't want to put undue pressure on this board. I want, I would, my, my hope, our, our hope is that we could get everyone on board with this project before we go to the board of supervisors.
Very well. So if I could get you to state that you would like to defer.
I, I, I will officially request to defer this application to address your concerns and look forward to doing so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we defer all three items.
We don't have to.
Sorry.
One at a time.
You, you will, you will have, you will have to.
Right.
Sir, that, Mr. Nicely, that, that does not matter per your bylaws. It does, it, well, if it was done that way, it was done incorrectly. It needs to be, because you had a public hearing on it, the bylaws state you have to take a vote or you have to vote to defer each one. He doesn't, the applicant doesn't get to decide at that point.
I'll make a motion that we defer the vote on PC 10-25 to the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Laduke, if we can get a roll call.
Yep, hang on a second, please. So, the next meeting, okay. Who was the second? Brett? Okay. I ran out of vote sheets, so I had to type it in. The next meeting is July 8th. Yep.
And Mr. Pallavoda, you would be, you, you would be making a motion to defer that to July 8th, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Decorda?
Aye.
Mr. Maffet?
Aye.
Ms. Flatley?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
And Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right.
I gotta do this two more times?
Yes, sir. I can get a motion for it.
I'll make a motion that we defer PC 1125 to the July 8th meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Gotcha, I heard you. Gotcha, that's them. Okay, so Sean made a motion to defer action to July meeting, seconded by Brett. Okay, uh, Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Maffet?
Aye.
Mr. Decorda? Ms. Flatley?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
I make a motion that we defer PC 1225 to July 8th.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Okay. This was for the special exception. Okay. Mr. Decorda?
Um, aye.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Pallavoda?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Maffet? Ms. Flatley? Mr. Nicely?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Hey, so, all public hearings have been uh, heard and have, a, action has been taken on them. So that moves us on to our next item on the agenda, which is new business, uh, which is Resolution PC-13-25 Dogon Innovation Hub HCOD Exception Request.
Mr. Chair, since that's related, uh, to the other three, it's related to the project. But I don't think you, you, you don't need a formal motion and, and a second and a roll call vote on that. I think since, I, I believe the chair sets the agenda or staff sets the agenda, that can just be carried over as new business to the July 8th meeting.
Very well, thank you. All right, moving right along, we're going to go to the staff's report for June 2025, the director's report, um, which is attached.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the director's report's attached in your packet. And one exciting item of note, we finally hired an environmental programs manager. He started yesterday. So I will eventually, his name's Michael Randall. Um, he's getting his feet wet, so.
Hit the ground running, right?
Oh, yeah. I hope to bring him. He's working on getting registered to take his certifications and his classes, so. I'll bring him to a future meeting to meet y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, let's see.
No Buffalo Wild Wings.
See, any, any committee reports, anything to report on, on committees? Sure, you have the floor?
Our Zotac, I haven't heard. I thought that the supervisors might send it to us, but I don't know.
Okay, I know where it's at. That's good.
I can speak to that a little bit if you want me to. Um, we are having another follow-up discussion at the board meeting next Tuesday about which of the recommendations from Zotac they want to move forward.
Very well, thank you. Um, commission reports, um, nothing to report, but I would like to say, um, thank each and every one of you for your diligence on this process. Um, it is very, it's very vital and very important that these processes are done correctly and done in order. Uh, so we, we thank our attorney for his guidance, uh, along the way. Uh, and I thank each and every one of you for your patience. All right. Next is other future business. There's nothing. And here comes our favorite part of the meeting, which is the adjournment. So can I have a motion?
I make a motion. We adjourn until Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
Motion's been made. We'll just, yeah, I'll leave it there. I was saying, meeting adjourns.